Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the afternoon meeting of the City of Sacramento Housing Authority and City Council. Would the clerk please call the rule? And you might establish your quorum. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Mindy, you may want to turn down your volume just a tad.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloe. Is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
I am here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Do we do the pledge of allegiance for the afternoon meeting? Please remind me, Madam Clerk.
Yes, if you would like to.
Okay, let us all rise. Please, maybe, Madam Clerk, could please lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's interesting that my audience doesn't. Well, good afternoon to everyone. We have a very important afternoon meeting of the Housing Authority and City Council, including two presentations by our council members, Mayor Protem Ashby and Councilmember Jennings, on our continuing work on the homeless master plan. But why don't we first take up the consent calendar? Let's dispense with that, and then without objection, we will take items four and five first, and start with the master plan process. So let's.
I'd actually like to pull item one from consent and have some discussion with staff.
Okay. That's fine. Do you mind, then, maybe what we'll do is make that the first item after the master plan?
That's fine.
Okay. So why don't we, there've been requests to talk about the one item on the calendar, which is fine. We'll take that up after items four and five without objection. Okay? So let us get right to one of the parts of the matter in the heart of the meeting, which is, are the continuing master plan presentations. This time, I'm going to make a few comments after, because these are the last two council presentations, last but not least, as I like to say. And after this, I do want to talk a little bit about next steps, because this is only part one of our months-long effort to do something that I believe will be transformative for our city in this very serious problem. So without further ado, let me turn it over to Mayor Protem of the city, Angelique Ashby, who I know has worked very hard in preparing this workshop presentation. And the mic is yours. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello to my colleagues. Are we good? Can you guys hear me okay? All right. So I do have a little PowerPoint presentation. I think Karina is online. If she has sharing capacity, Madam Clerk, maybe you can let her bring up that PowerPoint. And I wanted to just start by thanking my team, because putting these PowerPoints together and doing the backend work to get here and make sure that we have good information, good and useful information for everyone, is a lot of work on all of our teams. So this PowerPoint was actually put together by Kevin Green, and the content in it was gathered by Kevin, as well as Karina Talamontes and Maisha Ross. All three from my team are on the call. And just one point of privilege, thank you for letting us go first, Mayor. Today is a big day in our office, because Maisha is graduating from an accelerated college program where she'll be receiving her associate's degree, or I guess she's one year away, but receiving her degree later today. So congratulations to Maisha, who is on this call, and thank you for working so hard.
Maisha, congratulations.
Thank you.
I was happy, part of bringing you over to City Hall. I'm just so thrilled with all your achievements. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
That's right. Maisha brought her to City Hall, and I promptly stole her.
Because I did, yes.
That's right. So we're really proud of her. She's been working so hard for the last few years to put herself through that program while working at City Hall. So congratulations, Maisha. We're all really proud of you.
Thank you.
Okay, here's our intro slide. You already know me. The main point of this slide is just for me to thank my team for working on it. And I need to thank Bridgette Dean and LaShel Dozier and all of the SHRA team, and Robin Rose Hamer, who you will hear about today, and of course, my good friend Rochelle Dittmore, all of whom helped me sort of establish what this would look like. I made a concentrated effort to look at the gaps in what I consider to be our service continuum, which to me, and I think you will hear from Bridgette and LaShel, is clearly families or women with children who are experiencing homelessness. This, I think, is also the area that District One has some strengths to provide some help. So that is what we are focusing on. Next slide there, Karina. Or not. We'll go back to that and then get the next slide. Looks like she got booted. As she's pulling that up, I'll just tell you, that next slide is a baseline slide. It talks about what we've done so far, how we got here. Like, like all of you, we've done, we did a town hall forum. We did ours online, and our panelists were the mayor and LaShel and Bridgette Dean and Daniel Hahn and Joe Smith and myself. And in that town hall forum, we had 475 participants. We're very proud of that. We also, the year before, did a Women's Roundtable event. That was 40 service providers and agencies that work with homeless women and children. And we did an outcomes report from that meeting. And that is where I got these gaps in services from, because those leaders from all of those agencies helped us identify sort of what the areas are where we need additional help to serve women and children in the city of Sacramento. We also, out of our office, host a quarterly meeting with all of the low-income inclusionary apartments in our district, where we work together on resourcing them. And then, as you know, we're all very proud of the $2 million RFP for women and children. And I'm going to take one moment to pause here. City manager, can you hear me okay? I have a request for you, Howard. And that is, the $2 million RFP for women and children is coming back to this council in the next week or so. And it is my understanding that we had a tremendous response to that RFP. And Bridgette Dean would like you to augment the RFP so that she could consider including some organizations who offered critical services to the expansion of what she has been working on. So I want to officially request that now. Hopefully, Howard, you can acknowledge that you heard me at some point.
Councilmember, this is Michael Jasso. Howard has been a little bit delayed, but I've been paying attention. We'll make sure we act on that request.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Jasso. All right, next thing, ongoing discussions, yes. So my office makes a point of going out to visit with the service providers and talking to folks often. And then, of course, we worked on the five-point plan and brought that forward at the end of 2019. That, as you know, many of, many components have already been built on. Next one, Karina, go ahead. You're doing great. All right, next slide. Here's how we think we're already part of the solution. As many of you know, prior to the Low-Income Inclusionary Housing Ordinance being citywide, which is something that I championed a few years ago, it used to only apply to District One. And as a result, District One has more regulated multifamily development units than the rest of the city with 11. It's 2,080 units. We have 814 folks using housing vouchers in the district. And we have 430 regulated units under construction right now. So Mayor, our total for right now is 3,325 units, with a two-and-a-half-to-three-person average per unit. So about 8,312 individuals living in those subsidized opportunities. So next slide, Karina. Here's the strengths of the district. Natomas has some serious challenges. I'll get to that next. But, you know, there's a lot of open space, a lot of parks. The school district is really probably the biggest selling feature. They have a wonderful mental health program. It was actually just profiled in the New York Times. We put a connection there if you wanted to learn more about it. We have a lot of youth programs, like the Youth Action Corps, which is the one that I run. But there are other youth programs too in Natomas that are really successful, really geared through the schools. There's a lot of food access in Natomas grocery stores. We run a farmer's market out of my office, and we do accept EBT at that market. There is a food locker, Joey's Food Locker. It's really intended for families. It's run out of Councilmember Harris's district, actually, and run by the school district. But it is a, it is a favorite of both myself and Mr. Harris and everyone who comes through Natomas. It's a great organization. They really try to help families in the school district that are having food insecurities. And then, Natomas has some of the best emergency medical response times in the city. There's not a hospital, but there is a quick response from our fire department. All right, next slide, Karina. So those are our strengths and our weaknesses. Here are some of the other weaknesses to the district. We don't have service providers up there. We do not have good, reliable public transportation. There are only three routes, and none of them go all the way into the community. There is a lack of affordability, and it is challenging to live up there without a vehicle, particularly if you need to get downtown to service providers. So these are the challenges that we face, that make it, make it a challenge to help folks up there. But we're going to work around them. Next slide, Karina. Okay, now for the fun part. Here's my proposal. This is what I think we can do, what I'm, what we're going to bring to the table. First of all, I'm going to continue to beat the drum around achieving a citywide functional zero model for women, children, and families. Meaning, I truly believe this is where we should put our money and our effort. I think this should be our top priority. I hope my colleagues will all agree. And as we spend money and make decisions, and as the city manager's office looks at all of our proposals, I hope that we will prioritize a functional zero model. Meaning, we should have enough solutions that women with children and families aren't homeless in our city. And if they are, they aren't for long, that we're able to get them into some kind of housing and wrap services around them. To that end, here are my three proposals. One, you've heard all about, scattered site housing. One is LGBTQ host homes. And one is, and this should surprise all of you, hotel conversion. Next slide, Karina. Let's walk through each of them. First up, our scattered site units. I'd like to talk just a second about this, and then I'm going to introduce you guys to a friend of mine named Joanna. First of all, the idea of a scatter site model is to, is for SHRA to enter into master lease agreements with several different apartment complexes, identify those apartments, and then hire a case management company, like Life Steps, to do intensive wraparound services for families who really don't need to be in a shelter situation, and they don't need to be with a provider like St. John's or City of Refuge. They're ready for more independence than that. Probably just have some issues with affordability or identifying a location where they could live. That is where scatter site units come in. The reason this is critically important is because we have a bottleneck at the shelter level. So at City of Refuge, at St. John's, there's a bottlenecking effect where women are there, and they can't afford to get their own apartment, so they can't get out, but they don't necessarily need that service-rich of environment. A wraparound service provision with case management would be sufficient for them. On this note, I would like you guys to meet Joanna. Joanna and Rochelle, are you on the line here?
Yes.
There we go. Okay, let's see if they can, if we can get them pulled up. Mindy? Joanna is a person that I met. She is also a friend of Rochelle Dittmore's now. Rochelle and I met her. She needed a little bit of help, and I wanted her to share her story with you, which she is more than happy to share, and to just talk to you a quick moment about what a scatter site model or the opportunity to have her own apartment with some financial help would mean to a person like her. So Joanna, if you're there, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep, sure can.
Thank you for letting me share a little bit about my story and the importance of having help with housing for me and my family. I'm a single mother of seven children. After getting out of a domestic violence relationship, getting out of this relationship with, or situation was the hardest thing. Not because I was afraid to leave. I was ready. But because I had no one to go to, no family member, no any resources name out there in the real world. I couldn't find nothing. This situation made me feel vulnerable and hopeless, not having any resource or help to walk into a better life. I couldn't run to the streets with my kids. I couldn't get a place because I depended completely on my kid's father. I didn't have money or a job. I couldn't provide, provide for my kids. I didn't have someone to watch my kids or to get a daycare. Impossible to get a job. I wouldn't be able to earn enough money to pay daycare. My world felt completely done. And all this would keep me from walking away and having the possibility to offer a better life, a better lifestyle for my children and my family. I called many resources and had no response. I called shelters. They had not enough room to fit me and my kids. After months of looking for help, weeks of prayers, that responded, and I was connected to the most loving and caring people that it took me out of, it took me and my kids out of the, out of that situation to a safe house, where I've been there the last four months. These four months have been essential and the most important to this process, because they, they have given me the mental stability and the healing that I needed. Having mental stability has given me the power to stand up and take over my life again. Having a home, a place to call home, has been the most amazing thing, because without it, how can you be mentally stabled? How can you look for a job? How can you think to be a better you? It's hard. It's hard that you drown in your situation. But being able to receive this help and knowing that I will be going to my very own. I will be going to my very own home. In the next few weeks, thanks to a housing fund, not only gave me mental, mental stability, it gave, it gave to the most important in my life, security. Giving security to my kids has no words. Having them feel safe is the most amazing thing. I believe having a home is the foundation of a family and the most important piece in life. It gives security to our children, stability, not only physically but mentally, and the ability to be better men and women in the future. And for me as a mother, having a home has given me this stability mentally and emotionally to be a better mom and being secure. And it has empowered myself to stand on the ground and take over, over my life and open doors to pursue my goals and dreams and continue my education and business to provide a better life and future for my family. This is my story. But how many stories are out there struggling with the, without resources or shelters that cannot fit their family into? We need more help, more resources, more family shelters, so we, as parents, can offer our kids a good home in good neighborhoods with great schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing your story. Rochelle, hello.
Hello. How are you, councilmember, hearing councilmembers?
Thank you for everything you've done. So, you know, I want you two to stay there for a second, because I really want my colleagues to hear this. Joanna's so special. I know you can hear it, but seven kids, you guys. Where's she supposed to go? And you know, there are only so many Rochelle Dittmores in Sacramento. And we need to reach them all. And that is why I'm making this proposal for an emergency family shelter and why I think the scatter site models are so important. Joanna, that you're looking at right there, she's a magnificent mom, right? She cooks for all those kids. That was part of her issue. We couldn't put her anywhere where there couldn't be a kitchen, because she wanted to cook. Mayor, you met Joanna, remember? You, you met her at the church in Oak Park.
Yes.
With Rochelle. And you saw all of her beautiful children. We just, she, she has a patent, you guys. She is perfectly capable of taking care of herself if she can just get, just get out of that situation and just get a little edge. And so she's my target audience. She's a hero. And, you know, Rochelle has done such a great job of making space for her and then helping her on her way. And everything that I am presenting to you today, and really, everything that I've been about for the last several years on this council, has been about trying to lift up people like Rochelle, who are doing this work, and Joanna, who's trying to better herself and take care of those seven kiddos. And I'm really proud to call them both my friends. And I'm really proud to put this proposal in front of you guys today, knowing that it'll resource Rochelle and that it'll serve Joanna. So ladies, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Appreciate you both. Karina, if we can go back to our, to our presentation there. And this, the scatter site unit leads to, leads to a discussion of another part of my proposal. But first, I wanted to just bring on Rochelle Dozier for a quick second and have her explain to you how the scatter site model works. And I think this is important, because I think several of you have also expressed interest in doing some additional scatter site models. And I know Councilmember Jennings's district is ripe for that as well. So Rochelle, are you there?
Rochelle is not at the table, but she's asked me to step in.
Great.
She'll be joining us in just a few minutes. I actually see her feet headed toward our way.
All right, you know what? Let's do this. Let's, let's have her talk about that at the same time that she talks about the hotel conversion. We'll come back to that in just a minute. That be okay, Tyrone?
That would be wonderful.
All right, we'll do that. Okay, we're going to go to our next slide, and we'll queue up Robin Rose Hamer, but don't put her on just quite yet. This is one that I'm not sure if you all know about yet, but I really wanted to bring it and present it at council, because it's something that all of you can do if you want to. Robin Rose Hamer is a very good friend of mine. I've known her a long time. And she's working with LGBTQ youth. Many of you know her because she used to work at Wind Youth. She's working with transition age youth on host homes. This is a program that, where you recruit families to take in kiddos who are LGBTQ and have been displaced from their homes and therefore are houseless. And so, Robin, if you're on the line, if you would give us a really quick overview of what this looks like so that my colleagues could participate as well. While we're queuing her up, I will just tell you, our goal is to kick this program off in Natomas and to target 10 homes. Robin, thank you for being here. Go ahead.
Thanks for the invitation, Angelique. I appreciate always your work in District One and also your fellow council members and the mayor's attention to the homelessness issue in the Sacramento region. I'm Robin Rose Hamer, and I'm the Director of Housing Services for the Sacramento LGBT Community Center. And it's my pride and joy to present to you the Host Homes program. Host Homes is a unique innovation, and it's not a common program. There's only a few of them around the country. And we get all of our technical assistance from Point Source Youth, which is a national nonprofit organization that specializes in host home programs. So it really is a technically created program, and it's funded through the city of Sacramento. So we appreciate Bridgette Dean and her staff for continuing our application every year for this program. So the idea is really in the same vein as mentorship. So youth who are unable to stay with their families any longer, typically because they've been turned out of their homes, have a need for a bit of support, some mentorship and guidance around the next stage of their life. Host Homes iterations are about three months, anywhere between three and six months. Point Source Youth points the average in the country as a five-month stay. And generally, it includes youth getting exposure to academics, so the opportunity to enroll in either a high school diploma or GED completion program or college, depending on what level they're in, and the opportunity to receive some of that stabilization that Joanna talked so eloquently about, to be able to have the physiological wherewithal to go to work. So it really is based on Maslow's hierarchy of needs. The primary goal is physiological safety primarily. Youth are connected with mental health assistance as they request it and also making sure that their physical health is addressed as well. And then, helping them to be able to go to work or go to school or both, which in most of our host homes situations is the case. The majority of our youth in program are both working and going to school.
That's perfect. Thank you, Robin. I just wanted you to, I wanted you to surface. I know most of you know her, but this is a program that could literally work anywhere in the city. We're going to kick it off, and if folks want to be a part of that, they can. And if you'd like to talk to Robin more about how to do that in your district, I would just want to encourage you to do so. And you can reach her through my team or if you already have her contact. Robin, thank you so much, not only for coming to help us, but for your incredible, you know, commitment to youth in this city. I appreciate you. Karina, let's go back to the slides on hotel conversion. All right, here is our big sort of reveal moment here. This is not a whimsical thought. We have identified the hotel. And we have entered into some conversations with this hotel. We're ready, and we're excited about where this is going. Here's my vision for this. The idea is that I have watched Bridgette Dean and Rochelle Dittmore and LaShel Dozier struggle for the last several years with finding places that are suitable for women with their children and/or families in the city of Sacramento when they pop up in places that are less appropriate for their children and their families. I would like to take a hotel, one with kitchens and bathrooms and things, and renovate it. It's in my district squarely, in my district. And it has 117 units right now, but I'm calling it 110, because I think we're going to have to do some, a few renovations to create some childcare, daycare, after-school care places. And I'm assuming that's going to make us lose a few units. So I'm conservatively calling it 110, but it could be a few more. Mayor, no unit will house one person, because it's family required. So you're really looking at probably more like 400 people, even though it's 110 units. And I'll give you a bigger number on that in the end. But remember, for all of my units, it's more than one person, because they would all be families. So LaShel Dozier has taken the lead on this. She helped me find the hotel and helped me work out the plan. Obviously, we would need a service provider. We would do wraparound services there, but this could become the city of Sacramento's family emergency shelter location. And I think we have a strategy for getting there. We're not going to disclose the location today, nor are we going to disclose where we are in our negotiations, because it would hurt us in terms of pricing and making sure that we can get this deal across the finish line. But I did want you to know that this isn't just a, we'll find a hotel later deal. We've already identified the location. So Ms. Dozier, if you would talk just a little bit about the hotel project, and also, now that your, your feet and your head are all in the same room, they stay around, tell us he can see you coming around the corner. If you could just talk a little bit about how that weds up with the scatter site model. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your patience. Yes, I literally was running back from the county to get here. And yes, motel conversions, we're very excited about the opportunity to locate a women and children's or family-type shelter in this district. We have been working and looking throughout the city and the county for an opportunity of this type. And the reason that we are trying to get ahead of this is that in the governor's proposal, he has a very bold and ambitious plan in terms of housing that's very exciting. And we know that once those funds, you know, make it through the legislature and are appropriated, we have to be ready, and we have to move quickly. So if there's anything we learned from doing the project on LaMancha was that those who were ready were the ones who were at the front of the queue to receive funding. And that's exactly how we want to position the city of Sacramento. And we have located one where we are in negotiations. This is a great opportunity for family shelter. And if you look at our network and the way that we have our shelters lined out, we have one that deals with our transitional age youth or TAE. We have another shelter that deals with our single women. So this is really the perfect complement as we bring on the WX Shelter, which will have your singles, to have something for our families. Because as we know, families really do well and thrive within an environment that gives them all of the wraparound services for their children and all the supports that they need to stabilize. And if we give them, we find that families stabilize very, very quickly and are able to self-resolve. But if we don't provide that level of service, then it continues to really spiral downward. So very excited to move forward on motel conversions. This, I think, will be SHRA's probably fifth or sixth motel conversion that we have been working on and have been able to implement.
Okay, and then talk about how that weds up with scatter sites.
So in addition to that, scattered sites is another opportunity. As you recall, we really did look into this as an opportunity to do master leasing. And so this is an excellent opportunity to address especially domestic violence, women who are victims of domestic violence, and locating them throughout the city and county, doing a master. Uh, women who are victims of domestic violence and locating them throughout the city and county and doing a master lease. And we would work with our service provider to do all of the wraparound services and to help and assist them. This process, you know, would take us some time as we really build the inventory up with relationships that we would have with these different apartment complexes. But it's another great opportunity to really meet families where they are and give them the services that they need.
And since we talked about our strengths, one of them being the school district, LaShelle and I are pretty excited about the idea of having the family shelter in the same school district as the scatter site models because families like Joanna's could get situated in one area, then move into the house, but the kids never have to switch schools. So you minimize trauma and you minimize all of those things and you're really wrapping services around the family. It's really important for folks to know, I wouldn't be anywhere near being able to say to you, hey, we can open a family shelter in Natomas if LaShelle Dozier wasn't the executive director of SHRA. She's done all of the heavy lifting on this and I'm just really proud of her. Thanks, LaShelle, for bringing us such a great solution. I'm super excited to do this in District One.
You're welcome.
Okay, Karina, our next and second to last slide here. Now I have one, one last speaker and we'll be done. That's it on the hotel conversion. This is just a summary slide to help folks understand what we would be doing. So we're offering up the gaps in emergency housing. First of all, the transition age youth LGBTQ host homes in District One, which are gonna be fun and just wonderful to do. And then the scatter site housing and, which is the master lease. And then the women, children in family emergency shelter, existing units plus new units up there at the top. Our existing units are at 3,325, housing over 8,000 individuals. That's probably a low number, a low number. And then at the bottom of your screen there, you can see the proposed units and the number of individuals we think that that would roughly house. So I'm gonna ask Bridget Dean to come on for a moment and just tell us how hitting these gaps in service would help her with her overall mission and what she thinks here about the functional zero model. Bridget, thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Angelique. So on the functional zero model, we've had a lot of discussion across the city. And as you know, when we opened our hotel program here in the city, one of our main goals was if we get a call or a contact regarding women and children, our goal is to get them off the street ASAP. And we've been very successful with that. We have two hotels that are predominantly women and children. And then our trailers at Cal Expo have served that population. And we have found that those individuals have been quickly put into situations where they can stabilize. Joanna, your story is amazing. Thank you so much for sharing today. Uh, and that's a perfect example of being able to get somebody off the street quickly and into services stabilized with LaShelle and then moving forward into her own housing experience, which is amazing. So that's crucial when we're talking about the shelter model that and scattered sites that LaShelle touched on. Again, with our families and children, we know specifically, we can end generational homelessness. You know, when we talk about functional zero with women and children, we have to remember that we're having a second generation and often a third generation experiencing homelessness. And those kinds of tools and programs gives us the opportunity to really end that and provide that next piece of stability that allows those children to grow up, maintain schools of location, that's the same school throughout, without leaving school on a regular basis or missing school. Having access to resources and services and then bringing in those very specific wraparound services. And then the last thing I'm just gonna say, Angelique, about scattered sites, which are important, is we talk a lot about changing the narrative around homelessness and scattered sites can do that for us. The reality is often you don't know you're living next to a scattered site model and then you realize you are and you have this community member that is now part of your community who had been formerly unhoused. And that's a game changer when we're talking about narratives. So those are all areas that we can continue to work on. And with functional zero, the more availability to get families quickly off the street is essential to reaching that goal.
Thank you so much, Bridget, and thank you for your work. The combination of you and LaShelle with some of these just amazing service providers that we have in Sacramento really is making a difference. I'm seeing it. Joanna is living proof of it. She, her life has been touched by Bridget, LaShelle, myself and LaShelle, whether she knows that or not, we have all worked on this. And the mayor, for that matter, have all worked on helping her and her seven children. And I, what I really want to impress upon people is like all of us creating this network and then putting it into place so that it doesn't require us to be here doing it, you know, making those phone calls to each other anymore, is how we will help the future Joannas. And that is exactly what I think Bridget and LaShelle and myself and LaShelle are trying to put in place. And that is the gist of my presentation. Uh, the final slide, we don't need to go back to Karina. It's just, just a thank you slide. And I just want to thank everyone that helped me work on this and my colleagues. Thanks for sitting through, listening to it. And just lastly, reiterate in case Howard is back on the line now that I am asking that the women and children's RFP be augmented to further support Bridget's needs. So hopefully Howard hears that. And again, thank you to my speakers. Mayor, that is it for me.
Good. Hey, thank, thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Ashby. Thank you for a very good presentation. And I want to thank you for, I'm gonna use the term breakthrough around leading on suggesting a, a shelter in your district. I know that we have talked about that for a long time in various forums and in various iterations of this work over the last four plus years. The fact that you're taking that step, I, I think is really significant and needs to be called out. So thank you. So I, I have a question about scattered site because to me scattered site is an absolutely necessary and appropriate strategy here. What I think is, if there's an issue, it's, it's, I'm gonna use the word transparency, not around intent, but around reporting. In other words, how do we know what the baseline currently is? And as we do this master plan, how are we or colleagues who are, you know, engaging in different strategies, how are we going to report and account for additional 100 plus additional rooms? As you suggest, because it could, scattered site could get lost in the ether a little bit. And, and I don't want, I don't want it to, right?
Yeah, that's its, that's its strength though. As you heard from Bridget, that's why it's important is it's not a shelter on a corner. It's a
I got it.
Where you put people, especially women, who need to not be in a place that's known.
I just want, it's not about credit, but I want you, us. I, I want to credit that. And we can only credit it if there is, if it's really clear in terms of the reporting, how many above baseline, how many additional sites we are creating. And, and the thing that you said earlier about the, the family approach here, we're talking about, we, we could be talking about two, we could be talking about three, we could be talking about four people. So I want to do conservative but fair multiplication here in terms of what numbers you're getting, you know, that you're potentially getting to. Because i- if it's a four-person family, a woman with three kids, for example, that's at times 100, which may not, I don't know if that's an average or not, that's 400. If you do the same thing with the shelter, the hotel conversions shelter, and you're talking about 110, if it's times three or times four, your numbers inch up closer to the thousand than they do to the 440. So a little more precision on that, I think, is also something that would be helpful as we get to the next stage of this.
So Mayor, uh, so two answers to that. First of all, on our final slide that Karina had up there, it had a range for those numbers. And it ranges from two people per site to as much as I think five people per site. Because we know that actually the average is higher, the average is not Joanna, who has seven kids, which would be eight people. But if, but if, if this shelter were up, that is where she would be and there would be eight people in one of those units. And, and so I think we're trying to leave room for that, but at the same time, not assuming everyone has that big of a family. So we did put a range in there for you, Mayor, on our numbers that probably actually cheats on the low end as opposed to the high end. Certainly for the existing numbers, we, we leaned low, more conservative than high. And then in terms of the scatter site model, it's very easy to track because it would be a master lease. So we, SHRA would enter into a master lease with most likely the 11 low-income inclusionary apartment complex I have in my district, but it could also be with homeowners or market rate apartments or anybody else who wants to participate that owns units. And then we would track those units. The goal of this, which is really great, and I've seen this work with foster youth before. I've done this program in different cities with my dad. Is you give a young person or in this instance, a family, an apartment, you're taking care of the expenses at first, but you're helping them take over that apartment on their own. So the master lease actually would allow SHRA, say Joanna moves into Unit A with her children and we're paying for that unit for a while, but once she gets to a place where she can do it herself, she takes over the unit. We still have a master lease for a unit, but we now take Unit B. And the next Joanna moves into Unit B and they become viable on their own and, and live there till they need to. And this is a program that SHRA has done previously. It's also a program that Life Steps, the nonprofit we are talking about working with, has done previously. And maybe LaShelle could give you a little bit more information on how you would track those numbers specifically, Mayor.
Yes, in terms of tracking, I think that, Mayor, you raised an excellent point. And that's one of the things that we have been very diligent about as we bring each and every shelter on. We do track the information, the data, and in fact, that is provided to all of the council members every single Friday. So that you can really see exactly where we are, how many people are participating in the program. And our vision would be as we bring on this new program that we would start to report out in the exact same way so that we are constantly looking at where we are with baseline and how we're moving and progressing forward.
Mayor, Bridget wanted to comment as well. She has a point on scatter sites.
Please.
I, you know, the thing about scattered sites, I think, Mayor, you're aware of this as well, is the beauty of those is it really opens our free market with housing capacity. And so when we're struggling to find units or we're, you know, we're on that backend of trying to create more units, the idea of a scattered shelter model allows us to really open that free market opportunity to get people housed and stabilized to move to that next step up.
Okay, well, great. Thank you. It's good. So I got other members, I'm sure. So let me just talk about Councilmember Jennings' presentation is next. And to, there are some community leaders out there who have prepared their own presentation at my invitation. It isn't formally agendized, but it's part of public comment. Um, and so what I will do again, without objection, is I will ask Mr. Erlin Bush and, and and Fay Wilson Kennedy and the others to give a presentation after Councilmember Jennings is, is finished. Give them about 15 minutes without the two-minute time limitations. And then we'll and, and, and that'll round it out for the day. Okay, so just that, that's the way I suggest we do this. So let's get back to District One here. Is there public testimony other than from the advocates who have organized the, the presentation who want to speak about the presentation that they just heard?
I have no callers on Item Four or Item Five.
Okay, so then let's hear from colleagues. Let's, let's talk about D1 for a few moments. Not necessary. I mean, not everyone has to weigh in, of course. Just, do I, do I see anybody's?
Mayor, is it possible that Councilmember Jennings can go? I mean, I think it'd be great to, and then, and then we can comment because then everybody will be done. Uh, and then we can, we can have a conversation.
That's, well, why don't we, I want to hear the community and then maybe we'll have a broad council comment.
Oh, yeah, yes, the community.
Yeah, that's, that's fair. Okay, that's great. Okay. Thank you again, Mayor Protem. Now we turn it to Councilmember Rick Jennings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Angelique, I want to let you know upfront, you did a great job and, you know, you set the bar high for me to jump over. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do my best. But if I just get to where you are, then I'll be really happy because I thought you did an incredible job. So congratulations. Good job. Uh, I just want to, before I start, while, while they're bringing up the screen, I want to thank my team that helped me to put this together. Dennis Rogers, Henry, Agasson, Diane, LaShelle, Bridget, Danielle, Stephanie Patterson, and then also the team from Sacramento Help, Self-Help Housing, John Foley and Elizabeth Hudson. Of course, SHRA with LaShelle Dozier, appreciate all that you've done in helping us to put this together. Uh, Mack Road Partnership, Bill Knowlton. And then we've had a lot of people from the faith-based community who've helped us in this, as far as putting this together and understanding how we can come up with an innovative plan. Uh, Common Ground, St. Anthony Parish, Rivers Edge, St. Andrews, Faith Presbyterian, Greenhaven Lutheran and Chinese Grace Bible Church. Just a few, and there are more that we're going to be contacting as we come to more plans on how to move forward. I just wanted to thank them for helping us to put this together. So what I want to do is present the District Seven Homeless Master Plan and want to give you first the current condition of what, what is happening in District Seven. Whereas we have 126 regulated units in three different apartment complexes. Uh, we have 32 single-family units, 657 housing choice vouchers. In last year, if we look at last year, we had from 311 homeless calls for service. The numbers don't seem high, but in Pocket Greenhaven, 52. And in Valley High, Delta Shores, Detroit Avenue, we had 25. And you can kind of see a map of where those calls came from. Um, and you don't see a concentration of calls from any one particular area. Because most people who come to District Seven, they're, they're moving around. They may be near a family member. They may be near a park. But there's no services, concentration of services in D7 for them to come to. So they just kind of move around and then they actually move to other places. But, so not a tremendous amount of calls in District Seven. So next slide. If you go through locations that are available for potential service, when we did our research, we went with all the GIS mapping that was approved by the city council criteria. And we personally, I personally, visited every single site that was identified. And the only sites that we could find, large sites, where we could do affordable housing, where we could do some kind of a shelter, where we could do different kinds of services would be our retail centers and our parks. And so also, as you see, there are no hotels or motels in District Seven. So unless we wanted to sacrifice a retail center or a park, we would not have the ability to do a lot of services that some of my colleagues have been able to put on their sheets. Uh, we would not, we don't have open land for a formal shelter. Uh, we don't have open land for a tent city or safe ground. And we don't have a hotel or a motel for hotel vouchers. We do use hotel vouchers, but we send those individuals to hotels or motels that are in my colleagues' districts. So it's just the way it is at this point in time because District Seven is pretty well-built out. Next slide. So again, when we talk about our community partners, working with our faith-based community, I mentioned them earlier. Uh, also working with the Mack Road Partnership. And as plans progress, we'll continue to work with neighborhood and homeowner associations. And we do have some plans. With everything that I've said that we don't have, we do have a plan to move forward. And I want to make sure that when we have that plan to move forward, that we will continue to work with individuals, neighbors and homeowner associations in order to move forward. So let me go to some personal, um, I think I'm on page, yeah, the next page, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's the one I'm looking for. Oh, six, the focus of the D7 area. Right? Before we get to personal. So our, our proposed D7 program areas are safe parking, scattered sites, refinement of the winter sanctuary, uh, when we get in severe weather issues, tiny homes and permanent affordable housing. And so let's go into each one of those as we go forward. Dennis, I think we missed a slide along the way.
The personal background.
The personal background. Let's go back to the personal background just for a second. Just from a personal standpoint, I think many of you know, when I'm not on the council, I work in a nonprofit organization called the Center for Fathers and Families. In 1986. In six nineteen eighty-six, I've been a member of the St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church, where I've served in ministry there for, as long as I've been a member there. But for the last ten years, I took on a new ministry called the Winter Sanctuary that was run by the county. And I saw firsthand the impact that the lack of services had on the clients that we were serving. I also saw, over the years, the same people come in month after month and year after year. Which was kind of depressing in a sense, because we thought we were helping them by giving them a place to stay, giving them something to eat, getting them out of the cold. But in fact, they kept coming back over and over and over again. And I've been able to help many of them who walk through the door of my nonprofit. But it's also very difficult to help them when you don't have the right services and the right support in order to be able to help them. But what it did was, it reinforced my belief that if we have the proper intake and if we have the proper outreach and the proper wraparound services at our disposal and at the client's disposal, and if we make sure that we have those for them while we have them, you know, while we're in touch with them, then we can make a difference. We absolutely can make a difference, and we've seen evidence of that, just with Joanna, who just did an incredible testimony of seven kids and situation that she was in. We were able to give her the services she needed to be able to help her family, and, and that's exactly what we all want to do. I also learned the importance of building a relationship with every single individual who we come in contact with. And what I've learned is that if we don't build a relationship with the people who we're trying to help, it really doesn't bear fruit. It doesn't get us to the point that we can be successful. One of the things that a person told me who was homeless says that the hardest thing that they have to deal with on a day-to-day basis is that people will not look them in the eye. They will not look at them and see what they could do to try to help them. They will not give them any value. And that was the hardest thing for them. It wasn't the cold at night, or being homeless, or the lack of food, or any of that. It was the lack of a meaningful relationship with people who they may come in contact with. And so I've learned that every person that needs help, I first have to build a relationship with them, so a relationship of love, relationship of trust that they know I'm in it to try to help them and not try to hurt them. So our focus on D seven is going to be in the following five areas. And I think I already said this, safe sites, safe parking, scattered sites that we've heard a lot about with District One and some of the other districts as well. Talking about taking the winter sanctuary into a severe weather network, our tiny homes, and then permanent affordable housing. So let's get started. In safe parking, we've been working with Regional Transit on a site at the Franklin Light Rail Station. That Regional Transit is very, very supportive of it. You'll see a map of that site in a few minutes. We believe that we can have a location, we have a location, that can serve forty cars every night and somewhere between forty to a hundred and twenty people, depending on how many people are in that car. And that's at any given time. We have the ability to control the ingress and egress. We also are not impacting any neighborhood, whether it be with our lighting, whether it be with our services that we're providing to our clients. There is no impact on any neighborhood. It's a perfect location. We also have the ability to provide sanitation, and I thank you, Jeff Harris, for what you've done to bring us the, the, the mobile sanitation centers. And, and with the sanitation and the counseling, with the use of a portable facility, we have the ability to provide services to each individual while they're there in that parking lot proposal. So it would be an opportunity to give people a safe place at night where they don't have to worry about someone abusing their car, trying to hurt them, maybe hurting their family. And we've gone to several locations in San Jose, San Diego and Los Angeles, who all have very, very successful models. And we've taken from those models to bring them back to Sacramento. So I'm extremely excited about the opportunity to do that here in Sacramento on the Franklin Regional Transit Station with the help and support of Regional Transit and making that happen here. And I'm hoping that this will be the first of many that we're able to do in District Seven. We'll move to the next slide. I too have a scattered site proposal to focus on stable housing and consistent wraparound services. Again, you're going to hear that throughout the whole presentation, is consistent, ongoing, wraparound services. Whether they're homeless and on the street, whether they're in safe parking, whether they're in tent city, whether they're in a shelter, a motel or hotel, scattered homes or affordable housing. We have to have consistent wraparound services in order to make a difference. We really want to make sure as they exit the shelters and the project room keys, that we have those services. And the scattered sites are for individuals that are exiting shelters and project room key, individuals at risk of being homeless, especially our seniors and our disabled who are at risk of being homeless, and for single women with children, as Councilmember Ashby so articulately spoke to over the last presentation. And then I keep talking about adequate wraparound services that they continue to be available. We've looked at the success that we have in our area right now. We currently have thirty-two homes. And the funds, most of the funds, at, at least in ten of those, are provided by HUD and the city is funding some as well. But we have a goal to add another hundred beds in District Seven. And if you're on a five-to-one ratio, that would be another twenty units that would house a hundred beds in District Seven. And we think that's one of our best strategies in view of the fact that we don't have land to do some of the other strategies. So this is a big strategy for us. When you look at the cost of it, it's approximately twenty-five thousand per client. On a monthly basis, that's like twenty-one hundred dollars per month. And then on a daily basis, that is sixty-nine dollars per day. Sixty-nine dollars per day. That includes housing, that includes wraparound services, that includes everything we need to help people get off the street. And, and I personally have been using this strategy with Sacramento Self-Help Housing, John Foley and Elizabeth Hudson. I've been using this strategy. When I come across people who are on the verge of being homeless or want to get out of being homeless and they're ready to move to the next step, and they move into a home with three, four, or five other people. And with the infrastructure that they have in place, they have been very, very successful. I have had, not had one client that I have recommended that has failed in this situation. So I'm really big on the scattered site proposal, as others have said so as well. Let's move to the next one. Now, based on the, the, my work with the Winter Sanctuary, the ten years that I spent there, we want to create a network of faith communities and willing volunteers who will respond to the need of those during our severe, severe weather conditions. It would be built, as we said, on the Winter Sanctuary concept, but it would be spread throughout churches. Now, the Winter Sanctuary concept, we would have anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty individuals that would be there, because the church could accommodate that, St. Paul could accommodate that. Here, we're looking at spreading it throughout District Seven in many different congregations where they would take smaller numbers. And in taking those smaller numbers, they would be dealing with people who maybe live in that area near the church. And they would be dealing with congregations that would care for them and help them. And it would give the congregation the opportunity to care for their community and provide service even beyond those people who may be living in that community. It would also include outreach, intake and wraparound services in this as well. What we want to do is, as you get to the next slide, we want to, to put this together over the summer and over the fall and move into implementation in the winter of twenty-twenty-one. So, so we would start the whole process of developing this and testing it out and then be ready for implementation, not only in District Seven, but in all districts who would want to do something like this. These would be smaller centers, serving somewhere between thirty-five to seventy-five people in District Seven. We think the same kinds of numbers in each one of your districts, but potentially identify the faith-based organization and the volunteers that would work with these communities. And at the same time, we would open this up to tiny homes so that the church would not have to just use their facility. They would also open it up and have the potential of tiny homes in their facility as well. So if they had the space, and we've talked to a few churches that have the space, they're serving the homeless already. The tiny homes allows them to expand their capacity to serve. And they would utilize the tiny homes in their existing programs and in this winter network program that we have, that we're talking about as well. And we think that each church would somewhere, would serve somewhere between ten to thirty individuals per, per, or, or families. And so I mentioned eight churches before. If you got to ten, you'd have eighty individuals. But if you got to thirty, you'd have two hundred individuals that they'd be able to serve. And I think as, as they started really working with this, they could find that they could even serve more. But we want to build the concept first in order to make sure that it works for them and they're comfortable with their volunteers and being able to serve the people, again, with wraparound services. So let's go to the next one. Okay, so long-term affordable housing. We have currently, we currently have eight hundred and fifteen long-term houses, current houses. And if, in fact, we're able to bring in affordable housing at the Consumer River Boulevard in, at the Delta Shores, which is the first of two developments that we know of right now. Affordable housing plan in, in the first one would be between two hundred and thirty-eight and four hundred and twenty-nine units, knowing that there's a second one coming. And so if I just took the four hundred and twenty-nine, that would take us eight fifteen and four twenty-nine, it would take us to twelve forty-four with more to come. And so this is another strategy that we want to put in place, that is being put in place to help with this whole housing situation and affordable housing for people who want to get into housing but can't afford market-rate housing. So we're excited about that as well. And then just in closing, between the safe parking of forty to a hundred and twenty houses, our scattered sites of a hundred, severe weather program of seventy, thirty-five to seventy-five, and our tiny homes of ten to sixty, and affordable housing of two thirty-eight to four twenty-nine. The, the lowest number we would be able to serve, capacity to serve, would be four twenty-three, and the higher would be seven eighty-four. But knowing that any one of these strategies, if we have the funding, could move up. We could have another location for safe parking. We could find more scattered sites, and we could find more capacity for our churches to be able to serve in severe or inclement weather, and more tiny homes could be built as well. So these are all starter strategies. These are all starting numbers that I think can build once we get moving forward. And so that, with that, Mayor, I will close and start moving to any questions that my colleagues may have.
Mayor, you're on mute.
I was really enjoying what I was saying.
We'll give you the opportunity to say it again, Mayor.
I'll repeat it. I, I was going to say, Councilman Jennings, thank you for a good start here and for a very thoughtful presentation. It's obvious from your life's work and who you are that your heart is in this. And you believe in, in the potential for every human being, and that's, that's where this starts. And you've laid out a number of interesting and important strategies here. One of the things that we're going to have to discuss as a, as a city council, and this is beyond just the D seven presentation, is whether a traditional affordable housing counts. In other words, we have a lot of, we have many needs. We have a significant need for workforce and affordable housing. And it's obviously related in some ways to the homeless situation, because the loss of that affordable housing can lead to people becoming homeless. But it's also maybe distinct from, the, the master plan may be distinct from affordable housing. Because we're talking specifically about the numbers of unsheltered people who are currently on our streets, which we know numbers in the many, many thousands. And so one question, or maybe just seed to plant here, is on the affordable housing opportunities that you talk about, I can tell you one, one definition of affordable housing that will definitely meet the, the mark when it comes to the master plan, and that is permanent supportive housing. If it is, if it is permanent housing that, that helps, that provides those necessary services for people, mental health, substance abuse, the, the wraparound as part of the housing, that definitely qualifies, in my opinion. But we may want to distinguish that from affordable housing. So if these projects that you're talking about, the two thirty-eight, the, excuse me, the, the affordable housing projects that were in the last part of your slide have not yet been fleshed out in terms of what they may be, that, that may be a, a consideration here to make sure that we, that we end up with the right number, the right high number out of, out of District Seven. So that's just one initial thought. I do have, and obviously you pioneered, here at least in the city council, this idea of safe parking and the fact that it's part of your presentation, I think, is really notable and important. I will leave it at that for now and turn it to some of my colleagues who may have some comments. I see Councilmember Laloie and Councilmember Harris. Maybe not Laloie, I thought I had, it's Councilmember Jeff Harris. Go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of brief comments. First, you're right, Rick is the first one to bring up safe parking. And who knew how important it would become a couple of years after he brought the concept to the forefront? You know, I currently have probably a hundred and thirty car campers that I desperately need to put into a safe condition. So Rick, thank you for doing the footwork, you know, for going out and looking at the program and bringing that to council. It's much appreciated. And believe me, the need is very advanced. The other comment I'd like to make is for, for Proten Ashby, which is, I agree with you completely that we can, if we focus, get to functional zero with the population of women and children. It's something that I'm keenly interested in, and I think it is the most vulnerable and the most important population to work on. And the good news is, is that we can make a huge difference there and stop multi-generational homelessness, which is tremendously detrimental to the function of the city, to our budget, to everything. You know, I have seen a lot of kids grow up on the streets in District Three. And it is frankly, it's devastating to think about the start that they're getting in life and the barriers that they have to get past to be successful in life. It's tremendous. So, you know, I, I really wish you well, Councilmember Ashby, in procuring that hotel and pulling that project together. I, I really hope that comes to fruition. So thank you both. Appreciate you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. I don't see any other members. So why don't we do this now? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Valenzuela, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, and Councilmember Ving also put her hand up. Thank you. And yeah, I want to commend my colleagues. Thank you. Um, and yeah, I want to commend my colleagues. I, I missed bits and pieces because my internet was freaking out, but I'm glad I cut. The best parts, I think, and I'm really excited for a shelter, um, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, that's really, really cool. And, and I'm really excited that you're doing that and just wanna echo the mayor and giving you props for, for bringing that into District One. And, um, also to Councilmember Jennings for the safe parking, because yeah, I know. Yourself and Mayor Pro Tem Ashby and, and former Councilmember Warren and others have long been talking about what about safe parking? And I gotta tell you, we opened that parking spot over next to Miller Park, um, it filled up so quickly. And the crazy part was it was filling up with folks who had jobs, who, um, had sometimes had kids with them, who had second cars and just didn't. Couldn't afford the housing and couldn't, you know, find a place to be. And that parking lot is giving them what they need to figure out how to get to that next step. And so really, really excited you're working with RT on that and wanna offer my own help, um, as whatever we can do to, to help with that. Because I've been telling folks, I mean, I get Facebook messages now on my personal page and from all folks all over the county who are like, can I go to safe ground? And it's like, oh, breaks your heart. So I'm hopeful that we can get that, that going really quickly. Um, and I also wanna echo, I think, Mayor, what you were saying about the affordable housing, because it's totally related and we know it's totally related. It's like, you know, the stinky people from becoming homeless, it can get folks, um, like, you know, folks that Rachel, um, Rochelle is helping at, um, City of Refuge. Off the streets really quickly who don't need that really intensive housing, but it is, um, it also does feel like slightly separate, you know? It's like, yes, this is there and it's a big part of our District Four plan too, it's like, how do we help protect and grow more affordable housing? But there is that urgent need of, of what do we do right now? And I think in each of your plans, I see components of that, which I'm really grateful for. But it is the, it is gonna be an interesting site to, how do we get people stabilized more quickly, um, so that we can get them into. That housing, that transitional housing, um, so just wanna echo Mayor, your point and say that I, I agree, um, with how you're looking at those, those numbers. And, um, it's gonna be hard work that we have ahead of us, but I'm really excited to hear what the advocates have to say. And, um, yeah, I just wanna commend my colleagues for, I know, really hard work in, in neighborhoods that, that aren't necessarily used to. As you both said, your own way, having a lot of these services in your community, so I know that comes with a lot of resistance. So I just wanna applaud you, because I know, um, that's really hard work that you're doing in your district, so thank you.
Thank you. Lot of hours spent by both members, all members, all the members. And it, it's, it's reflected in very thoughtful presentations. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I also just wanted to take this opportunity, I think everyone has presented, so that's really great. Um, and really looking forward, uh, to further conversation about how the, all of this will fit actually into our citywide plan. Um, just wanna give a shout out to Pro Tem Ashby, I really appreciate your steadfast advocacy on behalf of women and children. And really excited as well for our shelter in District One. Um, and you also mentioned in your proposal, scatter housing, um, and that's something that I also mentioned, uh, for District Eight as well. And I think it's really important, especially to transitional housing, um, which is a really great option, and it works for our families, right? And, um, during my presentation, I uplifted the work of Waking the Village, um, who has years and experience working directly with families, uh, in homes. And so I, um, you know, really appreciate you laying that out for D-one, I think that's something that D, uh, Eight also wants to make sure that we continue to do. Um, and we wanna expand on what works, right? That's really important. Um, and then I wanna give a shout out to Councilwoman Jennings, I really also appreciate really your thoughtfulness of your presentation. Um, especially working with faith, faith-based organization to provide safe parking. I think, uh, you might be the only one that presented the safe parking piece, oh no, not just, I think, oh, I think, uh, D-four also had that as well. Um, but I really appreciate that, I think it's really great that you're working with our faith-based organization, not just in the safe parking, but, um. For their sites to be potential, uh, location for tiny homes, I think, um, that's really great. Um, and really wanna say just, you know, thank you for your thoughtfulness around that. Um, and then I would also just wanna echo the mayor, um, and Councilwoman, uh, Katie Valenzuela. Um, I do want to say, you know, we have about eleven thousand plus folks of unhoused, um, neighbors on the street, and there is an urgent need. Um, and I think many of us, uh, did present our affordable housing numbers, I didn't, I presented our affordable housing numbers in District Eight, but didn't include it. Um, in the total spots, um, because I do sense that while it is a diversion for homelessness, I think right now is also how do we meet the immediate needs. Of folks on the street. Um, and I just wanna share, um, as I, I was reflecting about, reflecting on all eight, uh, presentation. Um, for me, um, I think for the citywide plan to be successful, um, we're gonna need all of these options, right? Expanding shelters, safe ground, transitional housing, scatter housing, which I heard today, motel conversion, which I also heard today, right? All of this needs to be in every district. Um, I feel like that's the only way we're really gonna address this crisis. Um, we're gonna need diverse shelter and housing for all sub-population in every district, and I'm gonna keep mentioning that. Uh, because my commitment to my constituents and my residents in District Eight is that, you know, we will move forward with this. Um, because all my colleagues are gonna be on the same page, I want to make sure that, you know, when we move forward and we take that up and down vote. Um, that when we talk about the urgent housing needs, that it is spread throughout every district. And that is something I'm gonna keep saying, uh, because it's really important, uh, that was my commitment to my constituents, um, in District Eight. I wanna make sure, um, that, that we keep that promise. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vang. Uh, I don't see any other members up now. Let, let us move to the, what I call the organized community presentation. There are many community voices out there, uh, that all need to be heard. Uh, and there are also some lead voices that have worked very, very hard, not only following our master plan process. But participating, uh, in community meetings that you, the members have held. And coming up with some of their own ideas for sites, and I think it's an important part of the process here that, uh, we hear from them publicly. Um, and let's do that now. So, who is leading the presentation? I see, uh, Faye Wilson Kennedy.
I know.
Bob Erlin Bush, there he is. Am I turning it over first to Mr. Erlin Bush, or?
Yes.
Okay.
But, I will, I will turn it over to, and, uh, let me just start off saying thank you very much for the invitation. Thank you to all the council members, uh, for hosting community meetings and reaching out to your stakeholders. And for all the thoughtful presentations. And we tried as much as possible where we knew the information to honor the numbers that were being put out. Um, uh, we took an educated guess at, at District One, priorities, which we already knew, and, and District Sevens. Um, but in general, I wanna thank, um, my colleagues who are joining me today. Faye Wilson Kennedy with the Poor People's Campaign, Shelley Hubertus with Waking the Village, and Angela Drake with UC Davis. This plan was put together, as you can see, by sixteen, uh, community-based, uh, organizations. Some that are led by our, uh, and have the experience of, of our unhoused neighbors. Um, many of which, including, for example, Women's Empowerment, Waking the Village, that you've worked with already in your own, in your own districts. Next slide. So, we see our presentation and I, concepts and framework and ideas in general alignment with the master plan with, that the city. Has put on the table months ago, uh, along with many of your guiding principles that you presented. As, and we also see it aligned with the call to action for collaborative, multi-jurisdictional approach to end and prevent homelessness. Uh, their consultants, uh, that I'm sure you're familiar with, to the Downtown Partnership. And consultants to the ongoing, uh, city-county two-by-two that's been happening over the last month or so. Um, generally agree around a sense of urgency, scale, equity. Um, I'll get to many of these other points as well. And, um, where we even aligned or with the call to action was, uh, but not with the city so far. Around, uh, uh, a really robust homeless, uh, employment plan. Next slide. And then hopefully, as that slide comes up, hopefully you've seen the, um, the home base, uh, release. It's Sacramento Continuum of Care Gaps Analysis. And we see, um, our, uh, framework aligning with the three opportunities to improve the continuum of care. In Sacramento. So there's quite a bit of alignment, um, throughout our community, not only with the continuum of care, but, but with, uh. Uh, other stakeholders as well. Let me turn it over to Faye. I think we need the next slide and.
Next slide, please.
Oh, there you go, Faye, thank you.
Um, I would like to dedicate my portion of my presentation today in memory of the late, uh, Dr. Arlene Prigoff. She was a colleague and she taught, uh, social work at CSUS, and she was a local organizer. And in the eighties, she was sounding the alarm, helping us understand. How, uh, institutional racism, we now call, uh, systemic racism, racism will impact families. And we're living that today. So thank you, Arlene, for your body of work. Thank you very much, we miss you, and we are taking up the mantle. So I'm gonna talk about the three principles and systematic issues. First, addressing sys- systemic racism. Black and Indigenous people experience homelessness, homelessness four times more than their counterparts. And they actually are unhoused longer than their counterparts. A call for racial equity must be at the forefront of the issue. Intentional about program design, hiring, tracking programs outcomes. Next slide, please. A plan for all people experiencing homelessness is very important. We must include children, traditional age youth, including LGBTQ. Families and single adults, including seniors. Next slide, please. Please forgive my voice. Number three, equity. All eight city council districts must strive to have at least one of the following: short-term. Shelter, medium, income-based housing, including a city homeless employment program. Excuse me. Next slide, please. Okay, so this here, we're looking, we kinda lay it out for you what we mean in terms of the short-term, medium-term, and income-based housing. Uh, I'll just briefly go, uh, because we talked a lot about that early in the previous presentation. Around short-term, making sure that we have available to us safe grounds, safe parking, emergency motel vouchers, integrated campus, campuses. Um, uh, medium-term transitional housing for our youth and families, scatter-site housing, and on and on. And finally, the goal is to have more permanent supportive housing, uh, for folks. Next slide, please. We would like to introduce you to our ten recommendations, we feel are crucial to making sure the master plan citywide. Will be, uh, fully implemented and be, uh, doable. Number one includes a city-county partnership agreement. Fix the fragmented housing leadership structure. A homeless prevention plan. Trauma-informed care, harm reduction, and housing-first principle, accessibility. Excuse me, uh, ombudsman, criminalization, we need to look at good neighbors policy. Income-based housing, a citywide employment program. Next slide, please. And then the city and the county must truly agree to a partnership. Without this partnership, what we have envisioned as a city is not going to be successful. So housing plus human services, we all know will equal to success. Next slide, please. Excuse me. Fix the fragmented homeless leadership structure. Implement a citywide and county partnership agreement is essential. The current system is too fragmented and disjointed to successfully implement a homeless master plan. That must include city-county partnership that clarifies roles, responsibilities, authority, and accountability. Next slide, please. Okay, the homeless, okay, the homeless, okay, the homeless prevention plan. I, I'm really sorry, the, the, the thing where everyone's face is there is covering up, so let me get to that. The homeless, the homeless master plan needs to incorporate universal prevention and targeted prevention and diversion programs. Uh, to minimize the number of people that become homeless on an annual basis. This is especially critical to the eviction as we approach a mid eviction moratorium. Um, I understand in June fifteenth. Next slide, please. And all program-based, all programs should be based on trauma-informed care, harm reduction, and housing-first principles. Okay, and I'm gonna turn it back to Bob. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next slide. All programs need to be accessible to people with disabilities, both physical, mental, and developmental. Next slide. We felt that it was important that the city and county hire, uh, at least one ombuds person or more. On a contract-based basis that be independent, uh, and impartial. Um, that their role in the field would be to investigate complaints by unhoused neighbors. Uh, of discrimination and lack of service, services, really important that, uh, they be independent. Um, so they build the trust of our unhoused neighbors and, uh, work to hold programs accountable. For the, for their implementation and evaluate the quality of the program. We would like to see that happen. Next slide. Uh, we felt strongly that the implementation of the homeless master plan citywide be grounded in our community's sense of justice and equity. And not just as a way to circumvent the Martin versus Boiz decision. Next slide. We support the good neighbor policies that came out of many of your presentations. Um, that includes the following that applies to all people in our community. Our unhoused neighbors, community residents, neighborhood associations, business improvement districts, et cetera. Respect, dignity, diversity, inclusion, health, and safety are important for us all. Next slide. Clearly, we know that we have an unprecedented housing crisis in our, in our community. Um, this is a report just from about ten days ago, from the California Housing Partnership, uh, in the Bay Area. That we have sixty, and it was released in part with Sacramento Housing Alliance, that. Uh, we've got sixty thousand low-income renter households, who don't have access to an affordable home. And that eighty-one percent of extremely low-income households are paying way more than half of their income to housing costs. Next slide. And we support the hard work of especially D-four, um, in, in their, uh, housing recommendations. Which you've already heard, so I won't go back over them, but, uh, really to highlight the inclusionary, uh, going back and revisiting. And implementing a, a strong inclusionary zoning policy. Um, so we supported the five recommendations of D-four. And we wanted to add to support the conversion of abandoned, abandoned and vacant buildings into, uh, uh, income-based housing. Next slide. We felt strongly that, um, that, you know, if you don't know, about twenty-five to forty percent of homeless people work. But still remain in housing, uh, homeless because they're, of the high cost of housing. We really, uh, feel that by giving, um, creating a citywide robust homeless employment program. Having a target aspirational goal of eight hundred of our unhoused neighbors at a living wage and benefits. Remove the barriers, uh, to finding employment like childcare, transportation, et cetera. That that will lift them out of homeless, never, never to, never to return on. Next slide. And I'm gonna turn the first point, uh, over to, uh, Dr. Drake.
Hi, everybody. I apologize, I cannot get my, uh, my, uh, camera to work. Um, but many of you, uh, have, uh, met me or know me through my work with, uh, UC Davis. Um, and, uh, I am just really kinda gonna talk a little bit about. The role that UC Davis want, is, you know, really able and wants to play in, in, in this, uh, important area right now. In terms of community engagement. And, uh, most folks will know, and if you haven't read it, I would encourage you to look at the paper that was, uh, published last spring. Uh, which is really, uh, a very thorough and robust review of, uh, what. Various innovative care models are available across the country. Um, it's a very good and robust picture of many different options. Uh, and it really was initiated by Dr. Lubarsky, our CEO, in order to develop the idea of a one-stop shop further. A number of, uh, folks in the community have, um. Indicated that this report, or Dr. Lubarsky, has endorsed a specific model of care. But I want everyone to really understand that we're involved as an academic institution. And our mission really is to educate and help you as elected officials. Understand what the best practices are and what the evidence shows in terms of optimizing outcomes. Which is what we all want, right? We all want good outcomes. And so in terms of that, we really, really are not endorsing Haven for Hope as a model. It has been discussed a lot, but there are many, many options and models, including scattered site housing. Including. Centers that have integrated services. And what I really want folks to think about is rather than trying to come up with a solution, we need to have. More than one solution and we need to really craft solutions so they meet the needs of the individual. You know, homeless. Folks are not all the same as we've we've heard earlier in this meeting. We've heard about families and women and they have different needs than folks who are older adults. Or have other issues. So we really want to craft the solution to what is needed by that particular client. One or the other, we have a triple aim. We want to improve care. So we're involved on a lot of fronts in that arena, working with community solutions on functional zero. But we're also really excited to be involved in a pilot study, which is integrating homeless. Housing models and healthcare models together. In a fluid and organic way to produce the best outcomes. And finally, you know, one of the things that as an academic institution that we want to provide is. Education to you as elected officials. This is a very complex problem. And if anyone would like any assistance, technical assistance, support. Or, you know, briefing on any of the issues related to healthcare and homelessness. Please don't hesitate to reach out to talk to us. I'm in helping just a little bit on. Councilwoman Guerra's plan very, very minimally. But again, I want to make sure that everyone recognizes UCD health is there. As a community asset and really wants to support developing additional.
Thanks Angela. Next, I want to call on Shelley. With Waking the Village to talk about transitional age youth issues.
Hi, yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate getting the space to be able to talk about this. Yeah, my name is Shelley. She, her and her pronouns. I'm a prevention and intervention coordinator for T A youth in Sacramento County. So just as a quick definition of what T A is, for those of us who may not be completely aware. T A means transitional age youth. So it's folks who are between the ages of eighteen to twenty four years old. And there are three things in particular that I'd like to highlight in regards to this specific population and in serving this population. I do want to warn that I I talked pretty quickly. I have a lot that I want to say in a small amount of time. So feel free to like. Holler if I need to slow down or I'm happy to revisit it later. But um, one thing we wanted to highlight is that we found transitional living programs to be a really effective intervention, in particular for T A families. As the long term stays and intensive supports allow for more time to stabilize. Grow and just connect to services and supports that they need in order to transition into their next step. It can also be really challenging, excuse me, can be really challenging for young parents to navigate the world of childcare. As well as even just healing after childbirth or anything else. And so a transitional living program. Allows for that stability that's needed in order to access that healing. As well as intensive support and managing those transitions and learning how to become a new parent. We also though, as our number, our number two point, we also recognize that not all T A are served well in transitional living programs. I agree with Councilmember Vang and want to echo that, that we need a diversity of housing options for a diversity of housing needs. And within all of those, we do see that T A are best served by T A specific programming. Youth are not often really able to access adult programming. For a variety of reasons that I would love to go into later, if anyone would be interested in diving more into it. But um, we know that they are served better by T A specific programming. And so with that, as we talk about these hotel conversions and scattered site models. It's really important that we do have T A specific spaces for that, so that they are able to access those supports and services. As an example, Project Room Key was a was a very successful program. It made a huge impact. And it was important, it was so important for survival to the community and it served very few T A. In part and in large part because of the necessary prioritizations that are in place as we triage some of those programs. That severely disadvantaged T A. And that doesn't mean that we don't want to have supports for chronically homeless adults or other subpopulations that also. Need needs met, but that we need to have enough to meet all of the needs and ensure also that we're intervening early in experiences of homelessness. So that we can prevent more chronic homelessness down the road. There was a study done in twenty nineteen by Chapman Hall that showed that. Half of chronically homeless adults had their first experience of homelessness as a youth. And so we found it as a T A community, very, very important to really invest in prevention. And really invest in creating housing types and access that meet youth needs. So that they're able to be successful in those programmings to stay in them, to stabilize and to access their next step housing journey towards independence. We have also, the T A community has collaborated actively with S H R A, the city and the county in the past. And we really look forward to continuing that and recognize that that has been a huge way of increasing capacity. And also really intentionally creating avenues of access for T A. Thirdly, I would also like to highlight the impacts we've seen from T A prevention and intervention. It's become a hugely important connective tissue and it's improved system flow and collaboration as T A prevention and intervention. Facilitates taste conferencing for our our community. As well as do, we serve, you know, many, many youth per month, either preventing homelessness, diverting diverting from homelessness. Or intervening to make an experience of homelessness as short as possible. And in that, would love to highlight the the huge impact of having flexible funding that allows to be really creative in the ways that we're able to stabilize a person's housing experience. And I would also like to echo the call to collaboration at as a larger city community continuum. As we've seen the way that access to housing choice vouchers, shelters and other life saving interventions have huge impacts for T A. Prevention in particular can be really challenging as we don't have as many prevention programs. And so there are few things more heartbreaking than encountering someone who had everything under control, hit a roadblock. And now could be so well served by a rapid rehousing style program. That's a prevention program, but so many of the programs that we have. A person has to be experiencing literal homelessness to be referred. So just prevention has been a really, really huge impact for T A. And do just want to really again echo Councilmember Vang. And the need for a diversity of options as well as applaud the the movement towards more scattered type models that I think allow for. Catering to a person's specific experience as well as hotel conversions that I think allow for the the privacy often necessary for healing to happen. So thank you so much and throwing it back to Bob, I think.
Thank you, Shelley. Next slide, please. As I said, we tried to honor the targets as as much as we knew them. I think both Councilmember, well, all of you have said that you want to make sure, including my council member, Councilmember Jennings. That safe parking and safe ground programs be serviced and rich. And and then we're just about there to present our big picture of what the master plan can look like from the community. We know that each council, a district has people experiencing homelessness, but we don't know except anecdotally the distribution. So even even though we sort of evenly distributed most of the programs. We know that we need that. We need to tweak some of the numbers. For example, I just learned about twenty minutes ago that we that I live in District Seven and we don't have hotels and motels. So we need to rethink that piece, but it does give you a sense of scale. On the issue of scattered site housing, we just wanted to raise a red flag that we really need to be sensitive sensitive to eviction protections. Since what we're hearing recently is that some landlords are taking the upfront money. And then then three months are evicting the tenants. So that is not gonna work for those who want to have scattered site. Housing in in your districts. Clearly support everybody's sense of urgency. And then finally, really encourage each of the districts to take a look at existing encampments. We already know that are there. For example, at the corner of Freeport and Metaview, there's a huge encampment. There's already a sense of community. There's internal leadership. We can turn that into a safe ground very, very quickly. And, you know, I still, I drive by the Elks Club in District Seven every day and it's just an empty parking lot. I know that Joe with Loas and Fishes and Steep Waters, who first up to communities. Has a number of ideas of sites as well. So let's let's cut to the chase. Each of the slides, next slide, please. Each of the slides looks identical. The numbers change. So when you're ready to change the slide. So this is Councilmember Ashby. We distributed. No, across across the board. You can see each slide is organized by short term shelter and then the number following. Mid, mid, medium term housing, income based housing, and then what's the bottom line? We came close to your number, Councilmember Ashby. We were a little higher at twelve hundred. But clearly, we were right on in terms of scattered, the importance of scattered site and motel conversions. And then you can just go sort of quickly through the next slide because they're all relatively identical. Just on yours, Councilmember Lowery, we did put the. The integrated campus in your district, just to test the waters. Because in many of your presentations, you've said how important addressing the issues of behavioral health are. And so that's why we cited it in your district, just as one example. But that could be moved around as well. Next slide. Councilmember Harris, same same for you in terms of safe parking and safe ground. Motel conversions, scattered site, etc. And then Councilmember, next slide, D four. Really, the numbers are higher for D four. Because Councilmember Valenzuela put more on the table. And then some of the other districts, including the big number under medium term housing, tiny homes around five hundred. Next slide. Councilmember Chenier, we came in exactly at the same number that you put on the table. And I think, next slide, we got close for Councilmember Guerra as well. Echoing the number that you put on the table and then next slide. And then a little higher than than what was presented by Councilmember Jennings. But let's take a a different sort of look at it. Next slide. And Councilmember Van had a bigger number as well. I think we got close to the number that you put on the table as well. Now, as in regards to the mayors, we did count permanent supportive housing in the mix. Towards adding all this up to a cumulative number, which we'll get to in about two seconds. Next slide. So this gives you a sense of how short and medium term solutions are represented pretty equitably. Short term shelter by by Councilmember District ranges from a from about ten percent. To a high and D four of twenty percent. And then medium term housing ranges from eight percent to D six twenty percent. And again, D four twenty four percent. So it's not totally total equity across the board. We didn't think that was realistic either. Especially since your presentations were coming in with different numbers, which we tried to honor. But it does give you a sense of scale and equity. Next slide. And then clearly, the income based housing is is ranges from four percent to, I think, seventeen percent. And then the homeless employment program, we just created an eight hundred number to make the math easy. I think that, you know, as we talk about motel conversions and standing up tiny homes and all the rest of it. Those programs are ideal with working with the unions to have apprenticeships for people experiencing homelessness. To lift them out of out of homelessness. Next slide. So if we just add it all up. It comes to a relatively equitable distribution of short, medium and long term. Next slide. And here's, here's what it looks like cumulatively. Total short term shelter goal, almost thirty six hundred. Medium term housing goal, a little over twenty four hundred. We got that number to basically the number in the pit count. The the math that we use is that if we have eleven thousand homeless people annually. Seventy percent are unsheltered and according to the two thousand nineteen pit count, seventy percent are in the city. That's about fifty five hundred people. So we tried to come in around a little higher than that target. Because we know the pit count is. Generally speaking, low. The twenty twenty one to twenty nine draft housing element. Identified the need for fifty two hundred extremely low income units, which we tried to honor. So if you add the short, medium and long term, we get to eleven thousand two hundred ninety five. Almost exactly the number of homeless people on an annual basis. The next slide, please, and we're almost done. So just to reiterate the ten specific community recommendations again, next slide. We believe that if our plan aligns with all different stakeholders, that it's equitable. It's certainly comprehensive. It's to scale. It's goal driven and it's driven by a sense of urgency. Final slide, please. Together, we can end homelessness. And let me just say that. I will email this presentation to each of your districts after this evening. So you can look closer at our at our plan for further discussion. Thank you again for for inviting us and we look forward to the discussion and answering any questions that you have.
Well, I want to thank all four of you for really, again, an excellent presentation, so thorough. So so thoughtful. And the fact that you took a stab at numbers, even if it's not perfect, because none of this is perfect. Really adds a significant contribution to the ultimate decisions that we're going to have to make. And I mean, I agree with every one of your principles in terms of how we should do this. And you you've added a lot to the discussion. I'm gonna just talk about process. And then I'm gonna turn it over to colleagues for their comments on your presentation and. The overall direction here, because I know that everybody is thinking. What's next? Okay, we have all this raw information. We've got, we've had eight presentations. Impressive presentations from the city council. We've just had a very important community. Presentation, our our expert staff, who we talk about a lot and rely on a lot, have not yet weighed in. In terms of the citing question. And so let me give you a sense of where I think this should go. And of course, we're very firm in our direction and very flexible at the same time as we must be. Originally, I had said we'd like to have a final vote for the master plan in June. We've now kicked that to July twentieth after the recess, because what's worth doing is worth doing right. And this is important and it's complicated. And we want to make sure that our team has ample amount of time to. Put together the master plan and the ultimate resolution. What is this master plan thing? What it is, is going to be a resolution. And haven't yet decided with the city manager and or with you, my colleagues. Whether I'm going to be the author of the resolution as the mayor, for I'm not weighed in on any sites yet. As the council member for each of the districts, co-council member, I should say. I I am not, or whether or not it comes from the city manager. But ultimately, we're gonna bring forward a resolution that. Has to approximate something close to what the community just put forward in terms of. In terms of capacity and numbers and maybe a different mix here. You know, we talk about income based housing again, or we need a lot of that, but I'm not sure whether that is. All permanent supportive housing or general affordable housing, which might be outside of the master plan. These are things that we have to. We have to talk through. These are things that we have to, we, we have to talk through. We have great team, and I have great team, including Julia Burrows, who's really done unbelievable job helping get us this far. We thought it was important that we bring in a consultant to help us here. And so I want to introduce you to Chelsea Payne, who is the Director of the Ascent Urban Design and Planning Practice in Sacramento. And we chose Chelsea and her firm through a competitive process. Chelsea is an expert in state housing law. She has helped prepare more than 60 housing elements and numerous housing plans and studies for many California cities and counties, including working extensively for the city of Sacramento for our 2021 to 2029 housing element update, which is in progress here. And so what Chelsea is going to do is help us take all of this raw information and try to put it into a master siting plan that will ultimately be a resolution. And I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea for just a minute in a moment, but I just want to finish with a couple of thoughts. The raw material, which I don't mean to minimize in any way because what you brought forward, colleagues, and what the community brought forward is based upon a lot of actual work with your communities and a lot of thoughtful consideration. But in the end, what you brought forward, what the community brought forward may be either under-inclusive or over-inclusive. It may be too much in the sense that not every site may actually be viable in the end for whatever reasons. It may not be enough because ultimately, we've got to get to a number that is large enough where we feel together that with all of this money that is coming down, combined with a siting plan that, that, where we don't have to go back and re-argue the siting decisions one at a time, as we have done in the past, what is going to allow us to reach a number, impact a number that is in the high thousands and not just in the hundreds or the low thousands? And so the work of, the, the, the next stage of the work is every bit is important to shape what you presented, what the community has presented. And yes, potentially to add some sites that have not been yet thought of or included in consultation with the council members and the city council because ultimately, it's going to be your vote and our vote, up or down, one vote on, on this ultimate resolution. And so Chelsea, why don't you introduce yourself? And tell us why you chose to take on this daunting task?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you for inviting me here today to introduce myself. I'm Chelsea Payne, Director of Urban Design and Planning with Ascent. And we are a Sacramento-based consulting firm. We work on a broad variety of projects, but one of our specific areas of expertise is housing policy, as the mayor mentioned. I've worked on over 60 housing elements per jurisdictions throughout the state. And my team is working right now on several really important projects here in the city of Sacramento. We're working on the city's 2021 housing element update and the Stockton Boulevard Plan. So we see this very much as an extension of that work that we're already doing. And we're really, really excited for this opportunity to continue to serve our city on such important projects. As a Sacramento resident, I'm really proud and excited about the steps that I'm seeing our leaders take to address such an important issue for our community. And I'll just say, we understand the, the urgency, the very tight timeframe for preparing this plan. We know that we're going to be coordinating on just about a daily basis over the next couple of months, working with your city staff to pull this together into a comprehensive and citywide plan that we can bring back to you for a vote. So thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself today and to work on such an important project.
Very good, okay. Madam Clerk, again, you said we did not have any additional public testimony beyond the, the, the public presentation we heard a moment ago. Is that still the case?
That's correct, we have no callers.
Okay, so, members, any, any comments or thoughts? All right, well, stay tuned. One of the things that the consultant is, Chelsea Payne is, is tasked to do is to meet with all of you individually, which she will do in the, in the coming week to, to week and a half. So please make room on your, your calendars for a sit-down so that she better understands your point of view and, and what it is you want to see. And then finally, if I didn't say this before, I just want to, I want to say it or repeat it, excuse me. Once we have this master plan, then the job doesn't become easier, but it becomes a lot more clear. We take the money that we have and the sites that we have approved. We would, we'll go the next step of then prioritizing with the advice of our, of our expert staff and of our community, what sites for either safe ground, congregate shelter, hotel-motel conversion, permanent supportive housing, safe parking. What do we fund first? And what do we fund next? And as money continues to come in, we go further through the master siting plan by priorities that we've identified as part of this process. So there is a method to the madness here. This is unique. No, no city is doing this in this way. And I know we can do it and, and do it well. And I appreciate all my colleagues because you're the ones who have led the, led the way here. Thank you. All right. Is there anything else? Did I leave anything else out? Julia Burrows, did I leave anything else out? I don't think so, okay. Let's move on. Let's go back now to the consent calendar and item one, which Councilmember Valenzuela asked to be considered separately. So let's, Councilmember Valenzuela, do you want to start on item one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I have a few questions for staff and a few points after reading this report. And I do want to thank SHRA staff for putting it together. It's really helpful to see everything in one place like this and really gives us a good perspective on, on where we stand with our affordable housing work in the city. On the SRO ordinance, this is more of a note. And SRO single-room occupancy ordinance, you know, that we started with 712 units. We're ending with 801. And what's sad to me is that a lot of those units were actually new units. So while we're ending up with an 89-unit surplus, we should have ended up with 100 if we had really thought about how we could rehab and reuse the sites that we once had in the stock. And SROs have gotten a really bad reputation for how they've been maintained, but they also provide really critical housing opportunities for folks that, that are really hard to house sometimes in a lot of situations. So I do want to just make a note to staff, and I'm not sure if that's SHRA or city staff, but I would just like to think about this ordinance sometime soon and how we can protect the remaining, I think it's 143 units that are unregulated, to ensure that those stay additional and don't kind of get lost in the, in the market. And I see staff not being over there, so I'll end there. My next point was on the inclusionary housing. You know, the, you remember, as many of you know, we used to have a policy that required a certain number of units per development be affordable, which could have potentially doubled the amount of affordable units that have been built in the last seven years. And I look at this housing trust fund, which we did, and kind of instead of requiring units, we adopted a fee that was $3 a foot on average, sometimes as low as 76 cents per foot for developments like warehouses, even though the Nexus study that was done in, back then, justified a fee potentially five times that amount. So my question for staff, and I see Christine there. How much money would we have collected into the trust fund if we hadn't exempted large developments or central city projects? I know that's probably hard to speculate on, but I'm wondering if you have any, like, estimates?
Yes, Councilmember, it is a little difficult for us to estimate the, the fees that we would collect, collected on the zero fees, which is the high-density developments here in Sacramento. We'd probably need the planning department to help us. But if we had, you know, at a higher level, I think you asked once, if we, you know, had the $9 per, you know, unit or a fee, a $9 fee versus a $2 fee, we probably would have collected about $20 million with the zero fee for the high density. So it would have been quite a bit more.
Okay, thank you. That was my second question, so good, a good anticipation. And I'm curious, because you all, I know, look at what other cities are doing. And so when we look at what other cities do, we're either regarding mixed-income requirements or higher fees. What are, what are they doing? And how is their housing development been impacted by having those fees on, on their books?
I think most cities have a combination of fee and some still do have bill. We're actually starting, based on our last conversation, a new sort of study and outreach of different jurisdictions to be able to get back to you on that.
Okay, awesome. I'm asking these questions for a reason because to me, I think the fact that we don't have enough housing, it really isn't a mystery to me. I mean, sure, we've lost redevelopment, but I think we've also, we could be requiring more units get built or really looking back at that fee to see if we're collecting enough money to compensate for how much it costs to build these units and to really give SHRA the tools and resources to do that work, especially given how expensive building and, and land has gotten in the city since that study was last conducted. So, and, and I mean, we had articles this weekend, which is from the Sacramento B, that I just wanted to take a moment to note of the hundreds of people who've been left out of their housing in this pandemic, which is a fraction of the folks that we can assume were evicted. And also the thousands upon thousands of people who can't afford to live in the city anymore. I think the number was 60,000, if I remember correctly. So we have a real crisis and I really want us to, to think hard about what we're doing as a local city to try to fix that. So my question to planning staff, I guess, would be, I know in the housing element, you talked about bringing back the inclusionary housing ordinance. I think this report in item one is really a call to action. It's not enough money, not nearly, not nearly enough. We're leaving too many units and opportunities to build more units. And I know you talked about bringing back an inclusionary housing ordinance. I'm wondering what the proposed timeline is for that and if it might be able to start as soon as the summer, just so we can get that ball rolling on the discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council, Greg Salmon, Planning Director. Yes, that's going to be one of the first things we will be looking at doing after the housing element is adopted to consider revisions to the mixed-income housing ordinance. And part of that effort would be an economic feasibility analysis on how it impacts development, the costs that would be added and financing required and the like. So that will be the first thing we'll be working on after the housing element is adopted.
Okay, and what's the timeline for that, Greg?
I would, we would be starting, as you say, in the summer because the housing element is anticipated to be adopted around July. So it can, that effort can start shortly after that.
Okay, awesome, thanks, Greg. Yeah, I think this report, I mean, $3 million in the housing trust fund, $1 million in the mixed-income housing ordinance, just to reiterate, I think is a call to action. And that combined with the RIN number report we had that said we're doing great, but we're still way underperforming on the affordable units. And I know this is a part of all of our homelessness plans, which is really important because we know those units are critical. But I think we're also not giving our staff enough tools in terms of resources and policies to try to make that real. So thank you, Mayor, for indulging this vignette of questions. And with that, I'm happy to move this, this item.
Thank you. Thank you for raising an important issue, very important. All right, so it's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
That's second, but Councilmember Vang, if there's no testimony on this item, let's call the roll, please.
That's correct, there's no members of the public to make public comments. Mayor Pretim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Very good, that's the consent calendar. We now move to the public hearings, file item two.
Good afternoon, Sally and you guys with the Sacramento Housing Development Agency. This, this afternoon, I am presenting an action plan approval for remaining CARES funding and CDBG and ESG. As many of you know, back in March of 2020, the Coronavirus Relief and Economic Securities Act, or CARES Act, was approved to address the pandemic. SHRA, as the Administrator for federal programs, received entitlements for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and housing opportunities for AIDS. We received these funds in several different rounds. And we came before you to allocate funding to a variety of programs primarily addressing the homeless, those unhoused, as well as those and renters who needed rental assistance during this time. In total, for the Emergency Solutions Grant, we were allocated 11.6 million in Community Development Block Grant in 6.4 and for Housing Opportunities, or HAWA, 218,000. As I said, we've been before you to allocate a variety, to a variety of different programs. And we have some remaining funds, and this will be the last action for these funds. So before you is proposed allocation for the Emergency Solutions Grant at an allocation of 762 to the X Street Navigation Center and 6.3 million to a Future Home Key Project and Community Development Block Grant, 450,000 to the Meals on Wheels Program, and 907,000, 970,000 to a Future Home Key Project. Just going to provide just a little rationale for each one. As you approved the X Street Navigation Center project in March of this year, you directed SHRA to proceed with the allocation of these funds to that project. So it would be part of the operations for the next two years. The Future Home Key Project, SHRA anticipates the State of California Housing and Community Development, or HCD, will issue another home key funding opportunity in July. And this will position SHRA to be, act quickly on those project, to put forth the project in the city. And finally, Meals on Wheels. As we all know, this has been a significant impact for our seniors. And previously, they had, we've been providing them funding, but they've received a significant increase. Pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic, they were providing 625 meals in both congregant and direct delivery. And that has increased as of March of this year to over 115% at about 1,300 meals per day. And during the pandemic, there has been other funding sources, such as Great Plates and the dine-in program. Those programs are ending as of April and June. And so this will provide, this funding will provide 600 participants, three, a meal a day for five days a week for the next three months. We'll also provide some funding for those congregate sites that ought to reinstate those meals at the facilities. So with that, those are my recommendations, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Are there any, any questions? Any public testimony?
I, I have, I have a couple of questions, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Vice Mayor.
On the, on the home key pieces, those two, will the council have an opportunity to vote on them once we know what the project is? Or are we just doing it blind?
No, no, absolutely. We would bring it back before the council for approval.
So this is just a placeholder?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question I have is more general is through this process, which will be, I assume, doing more of with ARP and as we go forward with some of the programs within that. What are the lessons learned by SHRA that you would either do differently or however, whatever that looks like? But, but what do we learn through this process?
I'll, I'm going to reserve my question. And I think that's really because we really in partnership with both the city and the county, and that's a combined, it's a group, I think, a group presentation back about what we've, what's been the measurables since initiating an allocation of funds beginning in April. So I, I'm certainly, I can work with Danielle and representatives at the county to do an overall presentation of what those results have.
Was there a specific area?
No, I'm just wondering, we just, you, you just talked about the numbers of dollars, which is great. And I think you guys have done No, I'm just wondering, we just, you, you just talked about the numbers of dollars, which is great. And I think you guys have done a really good job. But we're gonna be going through this again and I wanna make sure that we're doing everything possible to, with continuous improvement. So I'm just wondering if there are specific things that pop out at you or you would do it exactly the same?
No, there are definitely things that, um, pop out of, pop out in terms of some of the work. And we've been able to take that and really use that as we move forward in terms of how we oversee the shelters. Um, the work that we've done thus far with Metal View and Arte, uh, especially as we pivot and deal with the pandemic and how to address those types of issues. Uh, but I think a more comprehensive, uh, look at all of that is in order for us to bring that back. Um, but for instance, let's say, you know, at the shelter, in terms of how we address, uh, dealing with COVID has definitely changed as we know more and start to deal with more of the residents there. Um, putting policies in place, you know, to ensure more safety and precautions. Uh, we have really moved very quickly to address those.
Well, and when will we get, uh, an overall report from the three entities?
Within the next month. Yeah, within the next month, we'd be able to, um, coordinate with our partners, uh, at the county, especially on the things like the Meals on Wheels and, and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
So would you mind opening and closing the public hearing, please?
Yes, thank you, um, City Clerk, Madam City Clerk, I would like to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Very good. A second by Councilmember Jennings.
Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Very good. Um, thank you. We do have, is that it?
We have one more item and just for the record on item two, we had no callers.
Very good. Okay.
Our last one is a presentation on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And we did have a speaker, is she on the?
Yes.
She on the line?
Yes, she's here.
Okay, so we do have, uh, an individual who has been able to, um, use our emergency rental assistance and we thought it would be a great idea for her to really tell her story in terms of how this program has benefited her. Uh, Olga?
Hi. Yes, I'm here. Hello, everyone. I'm honored to be with you this afternoon and to have a chance to say thank you to our wonderful mayor, uh, to council members, to all you remarkable people from Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency. I know you guys work tirelessly to help us with that emergency rental assistance program. I'm one of the particip-, uh, of the participant of this program. And I got help to covering the cost of my rent from this program. And it has tremendously helped my life during this pandemic, to say the least. For most of my adult life, I've been working nonstop as a single parent. I'm sure, uh, your parents know that we cannot afford not to work. Uh, we have to work, uh, as a single, uh, you know, parent, you have kids, you have to work, uh, work more to be able to support the kids. I've been running a limousine company for several years and have been basically working twenty-four seven. And I've been happy because I can provide, I've been providing good living for my kids and for myself. And I've been able to support my mom as well. Uh, ever since the COVID nineteen hit, everything has changed. Uh, my business came to complete halt as of March of twenty twenty and since then, there is zero income. I've needed to drain all my savings just to keep up with the bills. And I'm sorry.
That's okay. Please take your time. It's really important we hear from you.
I was riddled with anxiety and depression. I have no idea who to turn. I'm immigrant. I've been here in the United States for twenty-six years and so do me and my kids. I cannot rely to any family member to, you know, to go ask for help. Uh, and I've been lucky enough to find out about the Sarah program. I have no idea the program like this even exists, where can you could who go and ask for help? And the property management, A one property management, who I, who I ran the place, they I know they have all this access to the government, all these programs, who can relate it to us, to people like me, renters, tenants who struggling to pay the rent and just to keep afloat, you know, for the daily expenses. And she gave me the, the Sarah program. I kind of been skeptical, like, you know, does it, it's, it is not possible for people like me, you know, to get the help. I was ashamed. I'm so ashamed to ask for help because I never been, you know, I always relied myself. But get to the point when, when you give up, you know, and I opened the website for Sarah and I started to read. And to my surprise, it's so easy to understand and go through all the application process. I kind of hesitate to, you know, push the button, apply. I keep waiting, you know, so ashamed, you know, to ask for help. But like, I think like two day, two days left, today program end and I click apply. And did not knowing is it when or anything else, like few days, I think like a week later, I got the call from the Sarah representative. Uh, still, I think I will remember this name for the rest of my life, Mr. Saul Pineda. So professional and so compassionate, you know, I cannot ask the questions like in, I don't know, so I feel not comfortable, you know, to, of course, most of it is shame to ask. And he's so easy to understand. He told me what, you know, documents need to be submitted. Uh, we go in like emails back and forward and that's it.
Are you doing okay?
Yes. You know.
It, it really takes a lot to come forward and tell your story because it gives other people a sense that they're not alone. And, and that, you know, you can, with the, with the help of your city, your housing and redevelopment agency that, that people can get through this and you, you've helped show the way, Olga. Thank you.
And, you know, like, uh, I checked the program again. I clicked like, you know, the check, you know, and I got approved. You know, the words cannot express how grateful I am for the urgent financial help guides towards to pay my rent in Sacramento. You know, the city of Sacramento is amazing place to live. I tell everyone now. And you helped me and many people like me through this program, you know, to cover, at least get some relief, you know, to cover to even for me to catch up with the, you know, the bills, you know, because I got help for two months paying my rent. And it's, and it's immensely, you know, that help. And I say with utmost gratitude to you, all of you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
When I need that help, I got that help. And it's so generous help guys receive from you. If I'd not get that help, I've been deprived from my, uh, from my place to live. And, you know, you guys do change lives. And thank you to all of you and God bless you. And Sacramento is best place to live.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olga. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna take you around with me everywhere, by the way. Yes, we need, especially when we talk to other cities. I love it. Director Dozier, thank you for humanizing the important work that you're doing. Can you give us the big picture here? How many Olgas and families are out there who have received assistance? How many have applied? What do we expect the need to be? How much money do we have this round? How much money are we expecting in the next rounds? Given the May revision, given the, the, uh, the American Relief Plan Act dollars. Give us the, the big picture, please.
So we are very, um, fortunate in terms of having, uh, the resources to help, uh, families like Olga and many others, uh, who are desperate need of assistance. Um, we are now at about ninety-nine million dollars in this round. So our first round on Sarah one, we had around six million dollars or so, um, which we were able to get out the door very quickly. This one's a little bit different, um, because we are, um, required to follow the rules by the state, um, but, um, we're up and running. And so Mary Liz Paulson is gonna do a very, very brief, very, very brief, Mary Liz, brief, brief, uh, overview and presentation um, to answer those questions that you had. Um, and so we're really excited about that. So, Mary Liz?
Hi, my name is Mary Liz and I'm gonna try and go really quickly through this. So, um, so I'm gonna skip ahead. So thank you, Olga, very much for sitting through and telling her story. So we know about the impact. I think she explained very quickly how, co- very eloquently how the COVID pandemic has impacted her. These are the numbers that you know that we served in Sarah one. We didn't know that there was gonna be a Sarah one until there was a Sarah two. So we have received money from the federal government and for, from the state government for this program. And here today, you are here to consider the staff report asking you to approve the additional money from the state. So we had an application period that was open for about three weeks in February and March. We received almost thirteen thousand applications. You can see some numbers here about how many applied within the city and the county. They asked for an amount in arrears that totaled fifty million dollars for both rental arrears. And then with Sarah two, we're able to provide assistance with not only rent, but utilities and internet. So, and you can see the average amount of the arrears at the time they asked. The amounts you'll see have gone up just in time as people get further behind. So here's some information about the applicants who applied by race and by ethnicity. We had identified eight zip codes within the city and the county that were, where communities had a disparate impact from COVID. So we did increased outreach into these areas. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute in the future slide. So far, we have dispersed more than seven million dollars, you can see here, to almost fifteen hundred households. We continue to issue over three million dollars a week as we continue to process applications from landlords and from tenants as they submit their documentation. Here's some information about the recipients who have received Sarah benefits at this point to, so you can see the racial representation and ethnicities of the folks receiving assistance. Here you can see the household size. It averages two point five people per household that are receiving the assistance. Here again are the zip codes that I mentioned. If they were one of the eight, uh, zip codes in the city that showed, uh, disparate impact from COVID, they are colored orange. So you can see that we did do quite a bit of outreach and we had a lot of response from nine, five, eight, two, three. We will continue to do increased outreach to the other two at the bottom end of the scale, the nine, five, eight, two, four, and nine, five, eight, three, two, so that we will have more representation as we continue to take applications. We have fourteen nonprofit, community-based organizations that we have partnered with. They are doing outreach in the community. They're assisting folks applying for the assistance and they're helping both landlords and tenants submit paperwork so that we can determine them eligible and be able to disperse funds. You can see there's a total of thirty-one different languages represented here. We know that there is additional funds coming from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. You'll hear more about that in the future. And then our application period is reopened so that it is currently open as of May eleventh and we are continuing to take applications. It is not anticipated to close, um, in the near future. There's more information about eligibility and how to apply at our website that's listed there. There's frequently asked questions and more information also. Thank you. It was a whirlwind presentation.
It was, it was very good. How confident are you that we are reaching every family or every individual who would be eligible for the program who has not yet applied?
I think that we are doing a good job in certain zip codes, as Mary Liz pointed out, but there are others that we definitely have to increase our outreach and working with the community-based organizations. And so that's why it's so important for us to really make sure that we are collecting this data and mapping, um, so that then that will inform our strategy going forward in terms of outreach. But there are some communities, especially, uh, on the city and the county side, where we have got to do more work.
Very good. Are
Are you, are you working with the schools at all since they're partially back in session?
Yes. Mm-hmm. We are, we are working with the schools. We're getting information and flyers out to them. It's going out, um, through their network. Um, in fact, I've had some employees who said, hey, I saw a flyer, you know, came in, um, from, from their school site, so.
Great, good.
Very good. Um, we do have one member of the public would speak, then councilmembers Geta and Valenzuela, um, are in the queue.
May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. My name is Christie Korea and I am part of S D I U Local One Thousand Community Power. I am a member leader of the unhoused committee, working in the Sacramento region to lift up and support our unhoused community members. We are in support of the master plan in every district in Sacramento and we want to thank you for spending the time to developing this master plan. We wanna make sure that the plan in every district is comprehensive. We also want to make sure that we implement immediate and safe housing options now while we build toward a longer term solution. Summer is coming and our unhoused neighbors will need access to cooling centers, water, basic sanitation services, and safe places to camp and or park. The city's plan and the implementation must take into account the systemic racism that has led to the attack on Black, Brown, and Asian neighbors experiencing homelessness. This is an issue and it must be addressed. By lifting the eviction moratorium, will put many more of our neighbors at risk of homelessness. Ultimately, we need affordable housing. We need other options for low, very low income and low income people. As state workers, we are taking part and engaging. We are volunteering. We are donating. We are organizing. We are putting action behind our work. We know that this plan is gonna take all of us, but we really encourage the council members to look at triage centers such as those in District Five and Eight. So those low barrier shelters can quickly and safely serve many people right now. They're suffering today. The master plan should include triage centers in every city council district. Effort cannot be tied
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
The profit plan cannot criminalize homelessness.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Okay, um, so thank you. Is this a, uh, this is not an item that requires a vote, is it?
Yes, it does require a vote.
There's still a couple of questions as well.
Oh, yeah, I get, yes, yes, yes. Apologize. Councilmembers Geta and Valenzuela, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, and I, I wish I could see, uh, Olga here. I'm, I'm unfortunately still on my phone here. Uh, first, I, I wanted to thank her for her testimony, uh, and also the organizations of, um, of, uh, Sacramento Area Congregation Together and ACE and Northern California Legal Services who came to us last fall to, uh, um, and met with us to try to create this program or get this, um, with our initial CARES funding. And the city took some leadership to go at it alone. And I think where we're at today in a joint city-county program, has, has made it helpful also to get the information out because having two different systems has, uh, two different type of processes can be difficult, uh, for us on our outreach efforts. Uh, I, I think this is exactly kind of the, the immediate thing that we need to help folks with. I appreciate all the work that the, that Sarah and the Sarah program and the, and the staff at, at, at S H R A have been working on, on with this. Um, I have a couple of questions here that, that have come up recently, uh, both on, I know we've been, done tremendous work on increasing on the language access. both on, I know we've been, done tremendous work on increasing on the language access, but can, can you discuss a little bit of our efforts to make sure that we're increasing language access for the, for folks who are calling in and how to be able to help resolve their questions? And then the second question was a question about identification and what kind of identification folks can use, other than your traditional driver's license or real ID, so that they can apply?
Regarding the first question about language access, the application itself is in five languages. So that people, those are the five languages most commonly spoken in Sacramento. Those are Spanish, Vietnamese, Hmong, Chinese, and Vietnamese. And Russian, sorry, and Russian. So that's available. We also have staff who speak most of those languages. We also have a contract company that we work with for translation. So if someone were to call in, then we would, we would use the translation company and have a three-way call-in that works very effectively. The emails that we send out are also in the five languages. So that plus our partnership with the different community-based organizations that help, really help bridge that gap. And that's been very intentional. So, so I think that answers the question there as far as the identification. The identification we're looking for is something that shows that this person exists. It does not have to be photo ID. It does not have to be government-issued. So that we take a broad range of identification, just to show that the person is real.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. I think that would help, and then a little more clarification for some of the folks who've reached out to our office and, and also with the community groups. I do want to thank you again, all the folks at SHRA for beginning to expand your work with the community partners who have a deep reach into area, into our, in our community and thankful for moving forward this program. I think we've led on it in Sacramento. And with that, Mr. Mayor, glad to move the item. And this is just an action item, so I'll just, I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Geta. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. And just to piggyback, since my colleague started on my question, I want to be like super specific. Does California Border Patrol paperwork count in terms of identification? Or is there more needed?
No, that's, that's sufficient.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much for clearing that up. And thank you for all the work you're doing to move this money out super, super quickly. So with that, I'm happy to second the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments from members? If not, let us call the rolls. We can keep moving forward.
Mayor Proton Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sheneer?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Thank you very, very much. Really important. All right, that completes the formal agenda. We do have at least six callers, members of the public, who want to testify on matters not on the agenda. Why don't we begin taking those calls?
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, this is Kathleen Williams. I'm a resident of District Four. And I'm speaking to the community plan. As to the income-based housing, during the current housing boom, it is shocking how few residential buildings are being targeted for low-income and no-income people. A handful out of the thousands now permitted. Also, the city has not prioritized buying existing naturally affordable housing, which is steadily being lost, even as the inclusionary housing ordinance was repealed. We strongly support the housing recommendations in the community plan and I speak for the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee, as well as Services Not Sweeps and Poor People's Campaign and other organizations. As to the recommendations for coordinating with the county, the city must finally acknowledge that police sweeps are cruel and ineffective, keeping the COVID stabilization in place. We cannot arrest our way out of homelessness. The supported pro, supported programs that we support call for coordination as a must. As to the triage centers, people are dying on our streets before, during, and since the catastrophic January twenty-seventh storm, which led to the deaths of upwards of five people. We must have drop-in and triage shelters in every district. And finally, or not quite finally, but moving along, the Housing First strategy is a national best practice. The Haven-type Hope Integrated Campus is little better than containment and detention, where people are not considered worthy of housing until they conform to an abstinence policy. All people have a right to housing. This is non-negotiable and we will not count mandatory shelter and police sweeps.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. We support the community plan in its scale and comprehensiveness and equitable distribution.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. This is Joe Smith, the advocacy director for Loews and Fishes. And thank you for the opportunity today to, to have the community advocates present their version of the master plan. I got an email from Bob Irwin Bush about, I don't know how many months back, and it just simply said, what would it look like if we were to put together our own master plan? And he attached a spreadsheet and I printed it out. And I sat here at the desk I'm sitting at now and I started to map out my ideas. And it was, it was quite a mess on paper. So thankfully, there's a, a lot of great advocates that stepped up and helped develop that plan and add their ideas. I don't want it to go out saying that, you know, it was quite an honor to work on something like this because I lived on your streets. I specifically was unhoused in District Six. And I hope that throughout this process, that people who have experienced homelessness get to be a part of the planning and development and deployment, as well as people who are experiencing homelessness right now. So Loews and Fishes is located in District Three. And maybe what a comprehensive plan might start to look like in that area is existing encampments where folks have built community. We get the necessary supports they need, garbage pickup, restrooms, showers, a secure place for their belongings, and all that while engaging case management. And folks who are staying in cars and RVs would get a lot of the same. Hopefully, they wouldn't be, wouldn't have to park in a big, giant parking lot in the sun in the summer. Maybe there could be some, some development of ideas around that, but. And then having the clear pathway to permanent housing, whether it be supportive housing or income-based housing, so people can start recreating their lives. So it was really great today to, to hear all these plans and to be a part of this all coming together. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, City Council. My name is Zari Kay Colbert. I am with CLAP. We are a service organization within the city of Sacramento and all the marginalized community areas. We try to service Black, Indigenous, and people of color make up an astounding amount of our unhoused population here in Sacramento, even though Black people, Indigenous people, and people of color make up a smaller percentage of the Sacramento County. And with that, there has to be, as you know, there should have been, it's long overdue, an urgent equity change. This is and has been an equity issue that requires urgent action by our city of Sacramento. And that's why we support the Community Homeless Master Plan in its entirety that was proposed by our community advocates today. We think the Community Homeless Master Plan provides immediate inclusion and dignity for Black people, people of color. It includes stopping the criminalization of our unhoused neighbors. We support their initiative and proposition to have the city and county link and provide an independent ombudsman to assure there is racial equity and the actual impacted voices of our Black, Indigenous, and people of color can be heard when addressing issues and complaints with existing programs and services that they often go unheard, unheard of. We also support the warming and cooling centers with triage services in all the districts. We are floored, surprised that none of the districts had brought that to the table when it's a very key piece, especially during these extreme weather conditions and absolutely.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, we just support the community master plan by our advocates, the health and wellness services.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Timothy Brown and I'm a member of the Sacramento Services Not Sweeps Coalition, former director of Loews and Fishes and former county program director of the City-City County Continuum of Care on homelessness. And I retired in 2011, moved to Maine for quite, quite a while. And last year, I returned as a full-time resident. And I have to say, it's heartbroken that the pain homeless doubled in this time. And the only critical thing I have to say about the master plan is it's about time. And I think Mayor and council members, your leadership on pulling this together in an urgent manner that we all know it needs. The numbers of homeless people have played a small role in visiting and camps is overwhelming. Their needs, the level of disability. I mean, I know we're all concerned about families with children. And, but I have to say, the level of disability out there is unbelievable and, which is why we need this wraparound services, why every district has to step up and do this to scale. Again, Housing First is being zulified by some people in the community when there's no evidence of that at all. I mean, it, it's a best practice. It started in the Bush administration. When we housed four-hundred-plus chronically homeless people ten years ago or more, we cut chronic homelessness in half in fifteen years. So we know that Housing First, the period of supportive housing, works for these disabled people who are not going to be able to work and have multiple disabilities. Let's keep them in our minds, too, please. Thanks again for your hard work.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
I spent years fighting challenges.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is C.T. Weber. I'm from District Five. And I am calling in support of the Community Homeless Master Plan proposal. Of interest is the housing recommendations in the community plan, the fifty-two-hundred extremely low-income housing units, and also using the City Affordable Housing Trust fund to purchase existing buildings and put up dates, support the creation of a joint powers agreement between the city and the county of Sacramento. I think that there should be something added for cooling and warming centers in each of the city council districts. The citywide housing employment program, I think, is in addition to not only housing people, but also make sure that they're able to sustain themselves. The other thing that really catches my eye is the criminalization of homeless people. That's something that I think is, is a crime in and of itself. So I think in short, I just want to say that I want to create as much shelter as possible, no matter what type, whether short-term or long-term or anything else. So it's been going on a long time and I think that it's time that city councils step up and solve the housing problem in the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Nikki. I live in District Five and just calling to voice my support for the communities plan, expansive and, I won't say comprehensive, because by any means, it's, it's not there, but really taking a wider angled look across the city of Sacramento and realizing that, you know, we don't need one program here, one program there. We need quite a lot. We need, we need programs to match the scale of the problem. And not just programs, we need housing to match the scale of the problem. And I do appreciate the nuance difference. We do need to recognize the difference between actual access to housing and our emergency response system, one of which has never been funded to scale up to match the need that's created by the lack in the other of housing. And so just want to reiterate the need for permanent, accessible, affordable housing for people of all incomes, including no income, and reiterate that broken trust through criminalization is going to continue to create problems for your attempts at service provision. Top-down priorities and top-down strategies without the voices of people experiencing homelessness and with their continued criminalization on the streets, move-along orders, displacement, those things are going to continue to break the trust you're trying to build and you're going to have programs that flop if you don't have people involved in the creation of those programs who are going to be using them. So I might sound like a broken record every time I call in and say these things, but it's because I continue to hear y'all talk about these programs without, without getting the voice of people really experiencing homelessness to weigh in. And so I just want to encourage everyone about who is the primary stakeholder on this issue. And those are the voices we need to be listening to. That's the wellness that we need to be prioritizing. That's the crisis at hand.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Absolutely. The crisis isn't that I see homelessness, it's that people experience it. And we need to focus on.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you very much for the public weighing in. Are there council ideas and questions here? You can also save it for this evening if you want. And before we get to any members, let me just say, members, we do have a rather lengthy closed session, but I have been working while participating here. And we're only going to have one item, and that is the item relating to litigation, which I'm promised will be just a couple of minutes. The performance evaluation and the employee relations issues relating to the Office of Public Safety Accountability, we're going to put off until next week. So we need a closed session. If we adjourn, say, in two minutes, we can go right into closed session. And I would then suggest that we start the afternoon-evening city council meeting at 5:30 so that everybody gets a break and then that doesn't put us too far, too far behind. So, without objection. If there are no council ideas and questions, let us, we will move into closed session in three minutes. And then the council evening, afternoon-evening council meeting will begin at 5:30. If there's nothing else to come before the Housing Authority and the City Council this afternoon, we are adjourned.